Welcome you to the Pittsburgh Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for Tuesday, May 14, 2024 at 6:00 PM. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting an audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. We ask that anyone else in the audience who is recording this meeting to please identify themselves for the record now by standing and stating your name and city of residence. At this time, I ask that all electronic devices be placed into the silent mode. Thank you. We also will invite anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to please approach the podium at that time, identify yourself by name and address, and identify the agenda item on which you would like to speak, and then you may speak for up to approximately two minutes. Okay, before we kick off, I'd like to ask Mr. Joe Byrne to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with justice for all.
A little slapback going on there? Through the computer.
Michael, I think that was Brian's voice coming out.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Wasn't Joe being Joe.
Great.
Whatever's there.
Okay, the first case tonight is ZBA 2023-18, William Gleason for property at 8 Airport Road. It's review of a variance under 81416. It appears that we have a request from the applicant, and I will read this. This is Bill Gleason from Gleason Landscaping on Ampart Road. I have a status update before the ZBA on Tuesday, May 14. I am requesting to have an extension due to me not being able to landscape the property or have the fence finished because Unitil still has to dig on the property to install a gas line, and they are six to eight weeks out as of today. I am asking for a three-month extension to get this project finished. Thank you. So I guess as a courtesy, is there anybody in the audience that's here in regards to this particular petition? Okay, none? I'm going to just turn it over to the board. Would the board like to have any comment or like to grant the petitioner's request for three months?
I make a motion we grant the request.
Okay, so in tonight, we've got...
I would be the alternate.
You're an alternate sometimes, depending on the case, I guess, which we'll have to kind of work through it. So we have a motion on the table to continue, and that is going to be until September 10, correct? 2024, three months out?
Right, because we don't have others.
Okay. Can I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor, I guess I have to do a roll call. Joe Byrne?
Aye.
Brian Gallagher?
Aye.
Christine Tree?
Aye.
Joe Talbot?
Rob.
Rob, I'm sorry.
Aye.
My apologies. Okay, great. So this particular hearing is going to be continued until September 10, 2024. You're never going to let me live that one down, are you? Okay, the next case before us is ZBA 2022-31, Yale Dario Ricio for the property at 56 Cully Street. It's review of a special permit under 181313. And Mr. Ricio, are you here?
Yep.
You are. Great, thank you. One second, please. Okay, so you're here for a final review of your conditions, right? Before we get too far down the road, we have some response from the building department, okay? And it is from John Moriel, one of the inspectors, and it says, "The permit is still open due to the following: Never received final test reports from the installer, and no one ever applied for a sheet metal permit for the ductwork in the exhaust system." Is there another one?
He was, uh, he thought that that was included in the, in the permit that they took out for the spray booth. For the installation of the spray booth, he thought that all that stuff was all together.
Might be some miscommunication, so my recommendation is to have him go see Mr. Moriel, the inspector, to get that cleared up. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay.
We also brought some pictures of the back of the building that was supposed to get cleaned up.
Okay.
Can I approach?
Thank you.
So there's an ongoing issue with the neighbors in the back. He cleaned everything out, couches, you name it. And two days later, there was chairs and there was a whole bunch of stuff that they throw from the street in the back.
Yep.
He just cleaned it today again, so it looks like it's going to be an ongoing issue.
From up top or down low?
From up top.
The house in the back.
Okay.
I don't know what the address is. It's just like a multifamily.
Hmm.
I asked him to check what number it was, so maybe somebody could send him a letter and...
Yeah, unfortunately, that's not this board's jurisdiction, but what you could do is you could contact the Board of Health, provide them with some photos, and see if they could assist you.
Okay.
Okay?
Because it has been an ongoing issue before, and they were never taken care of, so they just keep mounting it up, and now that he's picking it up, it's something that, some other stuff you got to pay for to get rid of it.
Right. I agree with you. It's frustrating.
Yeah. I don't know if anybody, any of it, done a drive-by the place yet, but the way it looks, I wouldn't buy, and it looks like it doesn't even belong.
Thank you. As the pictures are being reviewed by the board, is there anybody in the audience that is here that is, has any comments regarding this particular case? No? Okay, thank you. What's that? At this point, I'm going to kind of turn it over. Let's look and see who was on the board at that particular time.
Brian, me, you, and Christine.
Okay. Jim, have you been in here for any subsequent follow-ups regarding this case?
None.
Okay. So I'll have you vote. Okay. I'll start with you, Jim. Any comments, questions, or concerns regarding...
I don't, other than appreciate you doing what you've been doing.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Joe?
Yeah, I drive, I drove by there today, and the property looks very good. You do have some debris next to the, when the fence is open, you can see the debris next to the building, but when the fence is closed, it looks very nice.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, I also wanted to say that the improvements to the building with, starting with the painting that was done and the improvements to the fence and the paving have been very much appreciated. And although you may think it looks out of character for the neighborhood, I think what's happening is that it started an improvement to the neighborhood now, towards doing that. As far as the debris in the back being thrown by the neighbors, unfortunately, you know, the condition remains, and I appreciate the efforts, have that as an undertaking to remove it. The last time the permit holder was here, they made the same comments, the same suggestion regarding the reporting to the Board of Health, which made to them, and I would just really encourage you to follow that through. I know that it is uncomfortable to make a report about nebbudders to the city, but where someone is continuing to disrespect your ownership of property as well as the rest of the neighborhood, it's not going to improve unless you do take some action, be accorded to the city. Beyond that, I note that we have a condition outstanding that says inspections from the building and fire departments are to be completed for this phase before the certificate of occupancy is due. I don't necessarily see that as something that means we are holding up the certificate of occupancy, but clearly, if there are additional permits needing in the building department, the certificate of occupancy is not going to issue until those are satisfied. And then I would really like to see this, this opening site operation, because I know that the permit holder has been waiting for a while, so I hope that you can move this forward. And then Mr. McGrawson, I just, just make sure we're checking online, see if anybody else is, hear the comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gallagher?
Yes, thank you. Very nice job on the cleanup, much appreciated. The improvements to the building look very good as well, and I'm very pleased to see it looking this way, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. Mr. Talbot?
No, just to jump on what Mr. Gallagher said, it looks great over there, really cleaned up the neighborhood. Appreciate it.
Okay. I don't have any questions. I have a comment and not the purview of the board. You guys did a great job in the back. I think you kind of went above and beyond. You cleaned out a lot of debris and all that. What I did notice that you're probably going to encounter, and again, not this board's jurisdiction, is that you're probably going to have a lot of washout and runoff now. I noticed the parking lot's already filled with dirt from the last rainstorm, but hopefully Plan B is some type of wall in the back. But again, it's not our board, you know?
Aldridge paving, which was the one that did the job, they dug something up in the back and threw some rocks to see if, and I think they put a tube in the bottom to kind of get the water to go somewhere.
Again, more of a comment than anything. Madam Chair, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing you because you're more than three miles away, but you had a comment about the inspections. It looks like where there are still, the permit still needs to be completed and inspected. What was your comment regarding the building permit inspection?
Condition number nine on the special permit.
Right.
Says inspections from building and fire are to be completed for this phase before the certificate of occupancy is due. There are other inspections that seem like that were needed from the building department, you know, that, between the sheet metal permit and then the final report that was due. I think, I think that our condition is not necessarily unsatisfied, but there are further conditions holding it up at the building, at the building department before the certificate of occupancy is due. But I'm trying to say that I don't think that bars us from approving the review if the board is so inclined to do so.
You said you don't think there's a problem with approving it? Okay.
That's right.
Okay, great. Does the board feel we need to go through this list of conditions?
No, we've got to bring it back. We've got to bring it back in September when it is the, the stuff done.
Okay, we're going to put it out till September? Okay. All right. Any comments from the board?
No.
Okay, so we'll have a motion to continue it until September?
Yeah, I'll do that. Make a motion, ZBA 2022-31, be continued until September.
Okay, could I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
I roll call Joe Byrne?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Turney Tree?
Aye.
Mr. Gallagher?
Aye.
Rob Talbot?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll see you in September?
Okay.
Should be the final, and just need you to get the rest of the permit stuff squared away. Mercedes will help you if you come down to the building department, try to guide you through what you need. Seems like there's just a couple things.
Thank you, sir.
Okay? Thank you, gentlemen.
All right. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next case, ZBA 2023-21, Jose Francisco Bueno for the property at 1033 Main Street, and this is review of a special permit.
Good evening.
Any comments? So voting members to approve are going to be Gallagher, Tree, Reynolds, Byrne, myself, and I don't think you are on the board at this time, so I'll have you sit out but comment. Okay? All right, so here for a review of the conditions? Yep. I'm going to take you, kind of go through the conditions, and you kind of tell me where you're at? Yep. Okay? And for the record, state your names, please.
Jose Francisco.
Catherine Mejia.
Thank you. Okay. The conditions of the special permit, I'll go through them one by one, and maybe you could just speak to them. The first one was no handmade signs and banners, professional signage only?
Yes.
Have you put a sign up yet?
Yes.
Okay. No vehicles for sale, no unregistered vehicles on the premises, and no storage of vehicles other than active customers and employees.
Yep.
Excuse me. Auto repairs to be performed within the building only?
Yep.
No outside storage or display of tires. Vehicle parts or property shall be kept clear of trash and debris.
Correct, yep.
I don't think you have this there yet, but I could be wrong. Dumpster shall be positioned on the right rear of the property?
Yeah, that's where it's always been, so.
Number six is in-and-out directional markers shall be painted on the pavement to indicate traffic movement in a one-way direction.
That is one thing we haven't gone a chance to do yet.
Okay, great. It seems like you're still kind of getting there, right?
Yeah.
So we'll just go through these and just do a quick review on them, okay? Petitioners shall replace the vinyl fence on the left side of the property?
That's still one thing that, that we got to do.
Still pending?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the fence on the other side will go up at the same time.
Petitioners shall repair or replace the existing sign pole and base servicing the premises?
That's something that, that it's currently, they're, they're working on that right now.
Okay, so that's pending?
Sure. Yeah, they, they're already painted and stuff like that. The base is what they need to finish.
Petitioners shall remove the pole with rims and chains on it and install a fence on the right-hand side of the property up to the end of the parking spaces to prevent parking on the sidewalk.
Yeah, so we got rid of all the, the chain, the chains, the rims and all that. We got rid of those, and that fence will go up at the same time as the vinyl one.
Okay, great. Building to be painted in a neutral color coordinated with the fencing.
Yep, that's already done, yeah.
Okay. All work to be completed by May 2024. Sounds like we're still...
Yeah.
Getting there?
Four more things. Almost there.
Okay. Not to be operated as a public or private nuisance. Hours of operation Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, Saturday, 8 to 1.
Yep.
Sunset clause, where the special permit shall terminate or expire upon the sale, transfer of the property, and the review date was today. So sounds like you still have a few more items to complete?
Yeah.
You're not in there?
No, not yet.
Yet?
No.
Okay. Proximate time when you, you feel you'll be able to complete these and anticipate starting the business?
We are, we're working with a company that's going to do the fence. It's kind of difficult finding somebody that, that wants to do it, because the way that I want to do it on the right-hand side, I want to be able to lift them up and off. That way, when the snow comes, it's a lot easier to clean up than having a fence in the way. So there's been like two or three companies that don't really want to do it, or they just don't show up. So that's been a little difficult. The parking lot, the lines and all that, we're getting all the cracks fixed first before we do any painting on it.
They didn't want to do it because of winter time, they had to wait.
Yeah, so that should be getting done pretty soon, so.
Okay, great.
Hopefully, we're almost there. I think within the next month or two, we should be able to get that cleared up.
Okay. Appreciate it. Is there any member of the audience that's here to speak with regards to this petition? Hearing none. Okay, I'm just going to turn it over to the board for questions. Sorry? Oh, yeah, we need to check to see if there's... Is anybody here remote has any questions regarding this? Missed that a couple times. All right, hearing none. Mr. Reynolds?
No questions.
Mr. Byrne?
None.
Mr. Talbot?
None.
Madam Chair?
What obstacles are there to your opening operation other than completion of the items on the list?
I'm sorry, it's hard to hear.
Can you repeat that? Sorry.
She said, "What obstacles do you have that are preventing you from opening the business other than completing the items?"
So we had a couple of family emergencies and now have a baby on the way, so it's been a little, a couple of things that have shown up, but we're taking care of it, so.
Okay.
Certainly have some issues about...
Mr. Gallagher?
Thank you, I have no questions.
Thank you.
Procedurally, Madam Chair, I know we've been moving to not rescheduling some of these where we're just asking the applicant to let us know when they're ready to come in. Is that how you'd like to proceed with this particular review, or would you like to put them on for September?
So this particular review does not contain a condition holding certificate of occupancy pending satisfaction of the condition. And because of that, without a scheduled review, we don't currently have a means of ensuring compliance other than board members making sure to go by. So this is not something that I'd like to schedule for indefinite, let us know when you want to review. I would rather have it scheduled for September for that reason.
Okay.
But I would also like it to be a realistic state, and if the permit holder does not believe September is enough time, then I would look for, you know, December.
Great. Does that work for you, September 10?
Yeah, we should be able to get it done by then.
Okay.
I'm hoping to be in there by, by that time, so hopefully.
Sure. And if that happens, you can just go see Mercedes?
Yeah.
And we'll try to accelerate getting you on?
Awesome.
The board, okay?
Awesome, thank you so much.
Well, thank you all for coming in.
Awesome.
All right, if I could have a motion for a continuance, please?
So moved.
Motion's made by Mr. Byrne.
Second.
Second by Mr. Reynolds. All those in favor, roll call. Mr. Byrne?
Aye.
Jim Reynolds?
Aye.
Madam Chair?
Aye.
Mr. Gallagher?
Aye.
Great. We'll see you in September.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next case, ZBA 2023-08, Joanne Hamburg for the property at 1341 Rinj Road. Good evening.
Good evening.
Hey.
How you doing?
Good, guys, how you doing?
We're going to get you your own name plaque, because you're so often...
Maybe some special seat or something.
I want the name on the back of your car. Just on the passenger side of the rear.
Never been to so many meetings.
Anything from any of the departments?
Okay, thank you for taking the time tonight. Just bear with me, I'm...
You're doing a good job.
Trying to navigate through this. All these are from Nick. And any information? Is he going to join us tonight?
Nope.
Are we going to go through all 26 of these conditions?
Yeah.
Mr. McGrawson, we did note a number of the conditions that have been satisfied already on this case for this meeting.
I would assume so. Should we go through the whole list?
I think that what is relevant at this hearing, because condition number 11 was, of course, the main, major issue, and that has been noted as satisfied. I, I think for the public record, the permit holders should make a report on the status of the conservation easement, the screening visits, and replacement of the trees, which was the condition to be satisfied during April, and then progress towards the things that are completing that factors, so that's going to be number 13 and number 14, and then eventually completion of the project by November.
Yeah. Madam Chair, unfortunately, virtually everybody's having a hard time understanding what you're saying. I thought it was myself, but, so we're trying to get through.
It's like mumbled.
Yeah. She's in another country, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know if she's logging off and...
Right. Can you, can you hear me better now?
Yes.
My gosh, it's like a new person.
All right, so just for the record, AirPods do not work well.
Wow.
All right. Yeah.
What a difference.
A big difference.
All right, sorry to, sorry that was difficult. So what I was saying is that where condition 11 had been satisfied at this meeting, I think what's important is for the permit holder to update the board on the status of the conservation easement report on the meeting from April to place the screening. from April to place the screening, and then discuss the completion conditions. And that's gonna be number 13 and number 14, the remaining pads, and then the completion of the recreation unit, as well as where we're headed for on the paving.
Okay. So, before we jump in, we're gonna have another review, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And...
And that review should be scheduled in July, where July 1st is a major completion date.
Okay. All right. So, why don't you give us an update on the bullets that the Chair has mentioned?
Conservation easement's all done.
Kind of work through it.
It's all been recorded. Everything's been done with that finally. Hooray.
Mm-hmm.
The trees, we had marked out. Everybody came up for a site visit and got to see where they were. They'd like to have them placed closer together, which I agree with. We will be planting the trees later in the year. The recreational building, well, we are waiting on the building department. We had plans designed. It took a while. We got them submitted. We even went in and met and sat with the building commissioner to try to get things moving along as quick as we could and answer any questions he might have. But he finally got back, had some questions, and now it's back at our architects to get back to us. We did jump ahead trying to get it done like lickety-split, but unfortunately, we're at a standstill waiting for permits. We did dig out the foundation. We even ordered our rebar and lined up concrete company to do the forming, but now we're kind of sitting still waiting for a permit. Once we get the permit, we figure it'll be four to six months to put the building up.
So, two words, major progress on that?
I mean, we're getting there, definitely. The paving is City Line. I talked to them actually this morning, and they are looking at their schedule. We're hoping to pave sometime in June. We've installed three of the six homes. I have three lots left. One slab is already in. The other two slabs, hopefully, will go in shortly, as soon as we can have enough nice weather to loom out the other lots and then hydroseed them. We've done some, but we're getting there. So, hopefully, we can get those two lots done in the next week or two here and get the concrete slabs in.
So, we're down to the last two pads, essentially?
Yeah. And City Line's good with the paving. What else was there? Did I get it all? The trees, the rec building, the paving?
The, I believe the connections for the laterals, electrical utilities are already installed for all units, because that was part of the rock drilling that needed to be completed, right?
Utilities are on all sites, including the recreational building.
And you're waiting on the general building permit from the building department? So, other than the digging out, you can't start anything?
Yeah, we dug the foundation, if you will, and I think you guys probably seen it when you're out there.
We did.
Hoping we could get her going, but...
I just wanted also to say, because I did discuss that while we were on the site visit, I appreciate your looking at the, and finding that alternative of cutting out the portion of ledge so that we didn't have to result, you know, go to rock grinding, crushing, or anything else that had been used in the past. So, I appreciate that.
Okay.
That's all I have for now. Mr. McLaughlin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Gallagher?
On my site visit, I was really happy with a lot of nice progress on the items and the overall appearance of the park itself. So...
Thank you.
I think it's looking really great.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yep, same page. Seems like the finish line is in sight.
Yes. Hooray. For all of us.
No. Yeah. How did that machine work where you were looking at to cut out that piece of ledge?
Oh, so I had, shortly afterwards, I met with the concrete cutter, and it's ProCut. There's a pretty big division here in Massachusetts. They actually have a cutter, a water cutter, on, obviously, with a blade that can cut that right down. We'll cut it out in one-foot depth increments, enough to get the footing past it.
That looked like...
Chiseled away, and then one more foot down, and one more foot down. So, it'll be, it'll be just as quiet as this room is, really. There won't be any noise involved with that. So, it's good. It was a good alternative to
Hammering.
Hammering, for sure.
How long's it gonna take to get that building done, did you say?
About four to six months.
Okay.
Upon, as soon as I get the permit in hand, we can, we can fix it up pretty quick. I've got everybody lined up. I've got all my ducks in a row. I've got the windows ordered. Everything's just poised to go, but obviously, with the building department, and it's not just solely his fault. His back and forth right now, he's given us a list of questions that we have our consultants reviewing, some of which are structural engineers, some of actually are even, I think there's one HVC question as well. And then I'll see, obviously, the solar and energy codes. He's pushed back on a couple of questions, and our consultants are hopefully answering by the end of the week.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Talbot?
No comments.
Great. I have some pictures that were sent via email, forwarded to us
Regarding the drain?
By the Commissioner regarding the drain. And I know that you spoke to us during the visit. Has there been other communication with Nick Erickson regarding?
We... There has been modifications since that communication. Our site work team brought the field stone, I mean, sorry, the crushed stone up to a higher level and gave it a, basically, an access way into the abutting property or up to the abutting property. That picture was sent from Frank, our civil engineer, and it was sent to the DPW.
Okay.
So, it's, we've got, we've now had two rain events, which has led to no water, standing water on either side of the property.
Okay.
So, I don't know what you got for pictures, but these are the new ones. And the, I had the engineer send them all.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Seems to be working well.
Okay. Great. At this time, is there any member of the audience that is here in person that has any questions, comments, or concerns regarding this application? Okay, we're gonna go to virtual. Is there anybody on virtual? Oh, I'm sorry. Sir, your name for the record?
Hal Malanson, 13 Bennett Road.
Yes, sir.
Mary Ellen Christian should be on this call. She does have questions about the drainage, the water going onto her property. So, it seems like maybe she's not able to be on the call, but I just wanted to mention that, that she does have concerns.
Okay, yes, and it looks as though she is in this email chain to the Commissioner.
Just to show you, Hal.
I think she's on Zoom. We extended the drain.
Is anybody on virtually?
All the way over. So, now it's taking the whole water.
Okay. I think...
All the time, so I don't know.
Mr. Malanson, somebody is on virtual, so we're gonna see if we can bring that person in.
Right.
If you could raise your hand, please?
Who wants to speak?
If there is somebody that wants to speak with regards to this case virtually?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes. Good evening.
Hi, this is Kathy Deschamps, 1307 Rinj Road. I'm on a direct butter. And I'm happy to hear that the trees were discussed and planned, but as an abutter, I have, we haven't been contacted. And our expectation is that there is additional trees added so that the water level on our property would be in a better state. So, I don't know, Joanne, who you work with, but no one from my family's been involved. So, we can probably follow up on that. And...
Okay, just for the record...
Why would I?
Could you let us know, so, to help us, give us a visual?
Yep.
Where is your property? Are you that house?
I'm the first house in...
The water detention?
Property, property right before the entrance, main entrance to the...
She's to the right of the driveway. When you're coming into the state, she's on the right. The trees that are being installed, Kathy, are in front of dogs. There's no trees being installed on your property line.
Well, we certainly have been, you know, I should have taken pictures of the water runoff, because it's, it's really, it's terrible. And I, my expectation is we would have some trees as well added.
Of course, everybody in the town does.
Well...
Okay, so you're, you're to the right of the entrance of the park. Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Yep. And so, that was one, that was one of my questions. So, that was good news, the trees were being, but I thought that they were gonna be provided to the abutters.
Okay, other questions?
The other question I had is, because the recreational center is now a managerial building and rec, I didn't realize it was gonna be a house. So, is, do they actually, do we just do the zoning, or do they go to the planning board and the, is there any type of other commissions they have to go through? Because I was surprised when I saw the plans.
Well, from what I believe is, the original plans from back in this project's inception included a recreation building.
Yes, and that was, and that's what I expected, a recreation building. I didn't realize it was gonna be, I guess I thought it was gonna be like a mobile home, you know, just not filled out, so.
Well, I think what has changed is that the fact that, due to the fact that it's a public-type building, there are different requirements to its design structure. So, I don't think its footprint has changed. I just think that its design has changed for code reasons. So, its placement and some of its fundamental design have changed, but the placement, location, and size, I don't believe has. But the applicant could respond if, if they would like, to the, to the board, please.
So, unfortunately, and I say unfortunately for us, because it costs twice as much, it has to be zoned for commercial. This is, this is zoned on this building, in particular building, is assembly, because it has to, it has assembly over, over a certain amount of occupants. Once it gets into that, you get into what they call commercial zoning. Well, this is zoned B, which is zoned as business, because it can be held as a, what's the word I can, you can assemble people there, you can have parties, et cetera, et cetera. So, the building has to go through much more stricter codes, and it also has to adhere to all of ADA applications. The reason why the building is cited as it is, is because the way it's set, I can't have more than a one and 20, one foot and 20 feet rise in order to obtain access into this building. Secondly, all of the room, all the insides and the interior spaces all also, also have to comply to ADA. So, that's why the building is laid out just the way it is. You have two, you're gonna, which I've shown you the board. You've got two recreational independent rooms, game rooms or crafts rooms. Then you got the assembly room, which has its own kitchenette, and it's not a full-function kitchen. And then it has a game storage area. In the back, it has storage for the, all of our equipment. And then the last space is the mechanical space.
And two half-baths.
And two half-baths.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes?
Just before it becomes a misunderstanding, I believe, you know, he stated it was zoned for, it was zoned for, the issues that he's discussing are, discussing are a matter of the building code. It's not a zoning issue. It's the building code.
Correct, correct. I'm sorry. Thank you for...
Yeah, I just didn't want anybody to think that we were zoning this area commercial or additional zoning relief was needed for this building, because it's not the...
No, when I say commercial application, it's just for those who don't know, you have what they call residential application and a commercial application. The reason it's commercial, because it does have to meet up to ADA handicap upgrade, handicap accessibility.
Accessibility.
Accessibility. So, that's why it's zoned, well, not, I say zoned. That's why it's built.
Not done, not done. That's what I wanted to make sure.
It's under a much more stricter code environment. You couldn't tell the house from one, from one house to the next.
A manufactured home would have been a lot easier.
Yeah, I would have loved to have. It'd have been half the money.
Sure, sure. But this is, this is a building code issue, is an ADA issue. It's not a zoning issue that we need to review.
Yeah.
Because it's a meeting place.
Yeah, assembly.
Thanks.
Okay, any other questions?
The only question I had was, as, as the project, you know, completes, at the beginning of the project, what, 19 years ago, they, you took pictures of our basements. And to ensure that there was no, any kind of damage, will you be going through that process of taking pictures and assessing the abutters? That was part of the, you know, when we first started.
That was with the blasting.
Yeah.
Blaster, the blaster hired a professional person, I don't know what his title is, and that's what he does. And when they were blasting in that area, they did inspections, yes.
So, are they gonna do a post-inspection?
If you have an issue, you need to just reach out to them. That's through the blaster's ...
You're the property owner.
I know. This is the...
You, you want...
Madam, madam, Kathy, if I could please ask, if you could direct any questions to the board?
I will.
And we will ask the applicant. We need to have some order in the meeting tonight, please.
Okay, I apologize.
So, I guess, you know, we're pretty far along in this project, and if you have any questions or have any issues with regards to that specifically, if you could reach out to the applicant and they could provide you with a contact for somebody to follow up with the inspection they did, okay?
Because this is the first I've heard of it.
Yeah, and that's kind of the first that this board is hearing on this particular item, but it is not the purview of this board. So, do you have any other questions?
No, I'm all set. I'll send it to the planning board, and that's where that was raised originally. And I'll, I'll look for the documentation of that.
That would be great. And, you know, we're gonna be having, hearing this case again. It's gonna be continued in July. So, please, we welcome that if you need to attend and have any comments, you'll be able to speak at that time, okay?
Oh, yes. No, I would expect all the abutters. A lot of the abutters are not, they're not with us anymore, or they've left, you know, there's been a lot of change of people since this. So, I can see why they, that other people aren't aware of this.
Yeah, we can only imagine.
Okay, well, thank you.
Oh, you're quite welcome. Thank you. Are there other residents that are here remotely that would like to speak?
Mary Ellen Moore is up there.
We have a Mary Ellen Moore. Good evening.
Yes, good evening. Thank you very much, Mr. McLaughlin and everyone. I just have a quick question. I know that Attorney Tree, you mentioned the different decisions we were going, you were going to talk to or about tonight, but I know that number 10 is, on your decision, was the drainage on our property. So, the decision does state that the drainage has to be constructed and maintained pursuant to the requirements of the DPW Conservation Commission and the DEP. And I have been in the email string, as Commissioner McLaughlin mentioned that. So, I am up to speed on, well, I'm actually not sure about the addition that was put in recently, but my question is, does Commissioner Erickson or the building commissioner need to review? But my question is, does Commissioner Erickson or the Building Commissioner need to review this newest, I guess there's been some-
Modification to the original design?
Yeah, that's the word. Thank you very much for helping, yes. Because clearly Nick Erickson is not okay with the design, and the drainage is not working. You know, water never stood on our property. It always flew probably underground, downstream, down through the Woodland State's property. And obviously, since this has all been going on in the construction, you all know that it's caused this flooding on our land. So nothing's growing back. All the vegetation that had been there is dead, and it just continues on bad storms. So I'm hoping what they've done, the modification, is going to fix this. But again, I think, I'd feel better if I knew that an engineer was going to review this again, the modification. And I don't know if someone had answered that, please. Thank you for your time.
Oh, thank you. So a quick response, has an engineer-
Yes.
The engineer is the one who-
Designed this modification?
Yes.
The modification has been done?
Yes.
Has the DPW Commissioner made a visit?
I don't believe so, but the engineer did reach out to him with a letter, with everything that we did out there.
Okay, so goal for everybody, right, is you're going to come back in July. Can you work with the Commissioner to get everybody together and-
We can have Nick come take a look at it.
See if we can resolve?
We will ask Jamie and Nick to come out.
Okay, great.
Ryan, sorry.
Ryan and Nick.
Please include the abutters so that they can, everybody can kind of get together.
Rather not have everybody on the site at the same time.
What's that?
I really don't want everybody out at the site at the same time. It gets too-
One abutter.
One?
The director abutter that's impacted? I only say, let's get this done.
That's what we've been trying to do.
You know?
Thank you.
Because I think if everybody's in the same room together, it's a better room.
Sometimes.
Okay, yes. Any other questions, Mary Ellen?
No, really, it's as far as being there, it, that, I'd rather just see, make sure that Commissioner Erickson is the person, and he is the engineer, and he's the one that needs to be okay with this.
Absolutely.
Thank you for considering me, but, you know, I certainly don't need to be there in person.
Okay.
I can tell you that the drainage is not working, but if there's a modification done and engineers are involved, they're the ones that need to approve this.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for taking the time.
All right.
Okay. Other members of the audience have questions, comments, or concerns? Your name for the record.
I just want to know if the committee received the photos in the email string that was going through. If not, I can provide those.
Yes, we did.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, going to turn it over to the board, Mr. Reynolds.
No questions.
Mr. Byrne.
These are abutters that are complaining. One is on the front, on the right. That's not on the, that's the other side of where we were, where the trees were going. Okay, and Mary Ellen Mara, is she abutting on the backside?
Way out the back.
The one that we went to all the way in the back where the bear was?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to understand where it was.
Yeah.
I'm fine.
Great.
And like I said, Monday, we put in a drain with crushed stone, wrapped it with Marafi paper, and set it up so that it'll accumulate, take more-
We saw that when we were out there.
Yeah. No, this is done afterwards.
That's why that email went out this past week. Literally, it's just been completed like within the handful of days. I bet you it's not even a week.
Yeah, well, it was done Monday. We had a lot of rain Wednesday, and it worked great.
This week should be a good indicator for us.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Agreed.
We didn't want to say too much until we tested it, so.
Okay.
Want to make sure it works right.
Thank you. Mr. Talbot?
No questions.
Mr. Gallagher?
Thank you, Mike. I'm all set.
Madam Chair.
I just want to be clear that because this commission, this board is not a good judge of whether a plan is engineered properly, what I'd be looking for at the next meeting to consider this condition satisfied is a letter from Mr. Erickson agreeing that the drainage is operating according to plan and installed according to plan.
So I guess that reverts to number 10?
Yes.
Great, okay. So I guess at this time, I'm going to say we just put this on continuance for July?
I would agree. I realize that the permit holder is stating they don't have a building permit yet, and it's going to take four to six, I believe I heard, four to six months to complete construction of the recreation building once the permit is granted.
Yes.
So that's clearly not July. But I would not like to modify the deadline at this point. If the deadline is modified, what I'd like to do is look at that issue at the July meeting when we have more information and hopefully the permit is issued, construction has started, and we can have a better estimate of completion.
So we can just do a broad sweep of the conditions in July?
That's right.
Great, thank you. All right, so I guess at this point, I'm just going to ask for a motion for a continuance till July 9th, and that's for ZBA 2023-08.
I make a motion, ZBA 2023-08, be continued until July 9th, 2024.
Great, and a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. All those in favor? Mr. Byrne? Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Madam Chair?
Aye.
Mr. Gallagher?
Aye.
Great, okay. July 9th.
I'm the calendar.
Please work diligently with the DPW Commissioner to take care of the abutters' concerns. That's utmost importance, and we appreciate your time.
You do.
Have a great day.
Thanks.
Okay. Next case, ZBA 2023-40, Travis Bovee for the property at 180 Main Street. Review of a special permit under 181.313D12.
How you doing?
Hey, how are you today?
Good.
Just give me a second here to- gather everything here. Okay. Do you have some feedback? Anything from any departments? Okay, Mr. Bovee, thank you for your patience. Maybe just kind of give us a general update on the project?
So currently still not open, hoping in the next week or two. It took probably three months to get building permits, so that's been a huge delay. We finally got that, so we've been doing construction inside. I'm hoping, still waiting on building permits to put signs on the building, so that's kind of been a holdup. There's just been a lot of holdups, you know, since the last meeting of the zoning. So really haven't been able to do much otherwise. Now that we have that, we're moving forward. Just a little slower pace, obviously getting people, because now everybody's super busy. So getting people to come in, electrician just came in and did some of that, still has to come back. It's just, like I said, the timing of everything, waiting on the building permit was just really kind of a huge setback. So the only other thing otherwise that I have left that we discussed was the parking lot plan. So I reached out to a few people, haven't heard anything back as far as an exact date when they can work on doing all the measurements and coming up with something. So I guess I'd like to get an extension on that. I don't know if September, October makes sense. I mean, right now, we're really trying to get through a lot of things inside the building, built out and ready to open. And then obviously signage.
Okay.
Yeah, one other thing that I did want to obviously bring up, too. So I know in the first meeting, you know, she had asked me in regards to car sales. So I think it's something I'd like to add to this, you know, where I'm able to maybe sell five cars, you know, apply for a dealer's license. I don't think it's anything I want to get too heavy into, but it would be nice to have that availability to do that.
Okay.
So I guess modifying, you know, the terms of what we discussed before.
Okay, great. Anybody in the audience that is here with regards to this petition? Speak in favor, against, or just some general information? No, thank you. Is there anybody virtually here? Could you please raise your hand in some form or method? None, okay. Going to turn it over to Mr. Reynolds, any questions so far?
No, no questions. I think this holds a lot of promise. Sounds like you're working at it.
I appreciate that.
Mr. Byrne?
No, I'm fine. I'd like to see him get open.
Yeah, me too.
Start making some money.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Gallagher?
No questions, but I do appreciate the effort that's been put into making this project a success, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Talbot?
No questions.
Okay. So Mr. Byrne, it looks like when we do move to a vote, somebody else is going to have to make a motion. Because you weren't here, I don't believe, on that particular case. But you're going to comment. Any feedback you might have?
All right. It's okay with me.
Just got to keep-
Yeah, keep it right.
Keep it right. Madam Tree?
Just a question-
Madam Chair. My apologies.
Not today. Just a question for the permit holder on the parking plan. There was a discussion of you wanting to modify the parking plan and then a condition that the parking be striped by June 30th. Do you still want to modify the parking plan from the 2017 plan?
I do, so I'd like to modify the plan and, you know, when I'm able to get somebody to come in and look at what's existing and do the measurements on the property, I'd honestly like to keep it what Montori had. To me, it's got good flow, and it makes sense in and out. You know, Mount Wachusett, when they were in there and they had presented a plan, you know, they were looking at it as for students. So what everything that they wanted to put in between doesn't make sense for tow trucks and accessibility and plowing that lot. It just makes it more of a pain, you know, so it doesn't really make it work well with the business and what it's, you know, doing. And then, you know, when you had mentioned to me about, well, if we go based on Mount Wachusett's parking plan, you can't have 10 employees because there's not enough parking. It's a 13,000-square-foot building. So when I was mentioning my old property on John Fitch Highway had 2017 to spots, and it was a quarter of the size, I think the spots that we're asking for, once the plan is completed, you know, by a professional, I think makes sense for the location and the, you know, movement there. Certainly not going to be anything where you can't move in and out, you know, or create any kind of, you know, traffic issues.
So, you know, my issue is we wanted that the spaces to be striped, and I want you to open. And I don't want, obviously, you don't want to stripe them more than once, but we have a parking plan that was approved that you can use right away. We would need to see the parking plan that you would propose if it was different. And I think you didn't, Montori's hadn't provided a plan for you that you could reuse like Mount Wachusett did, correct?
Yeah, so, you know, unless I really start digging back further into like archives or go to City Hall and see if there's something on record, I don't personally have anything. I imagine, you know, I think he was a stand-up guy. I'm sure he probably did everything the right way, did a lot of business in this community, so I'm sure there's probably some kind of parking plan on file. I mean, I would be up for painting over the lines that are already existing until we have a modified plan that's presented. But for me to do it to what Mount Wachusett is, and then I can only have X amount of employees, that puts a huge hurt on the business. I mean, I have all the space, and I can't do anything, what if I can't have enough parking spots? You know, I don't plan on storing cars outside or making it look like a junkyard. You know, based on my business that was in town before, it was, you know, eight to 10 years, there was never anything stored outside. It never looked like a junkyard. I had plants, flowers, like I kept it clean. I did whatever I could to make it presentable, and I plan on doing the same here. But if I don't have enough parking, that's going to hurt me huge every time.
But I'm just going to suggest that I think until you're ready with that plan, if what you need to do is stripe the parking spaces so you can start working and then paint them over later, that might be the way for you to go, and then we don't have to. Because I don't want to keep coming, having you coming back if we don't need you to. So I would suggest to you to go with what you already have approved. And when you do have a modified parking plan ready, because I expect your business is going to grow, but not all in the first day.
Yeah, sorry for the interruption, but, I mean, my business here should do double what I did on my old location, and I serviced a lot of cars every day. So I think the expectations of the spots that you want me to paint the lines for, I don't think it's going to make sense. I mean, if you can just allow me to repaint what's there, and I'll do my best to get a modified plan way before any meeting or date we set. You know, I would pay to have everything painted and cleaned up, so at least it's visible, the handicap spots. But I think to put it down to, what was it, 22 spots, two of them handicapped, 20, you know, accessible, so right there, just with employees alone, is going to take up most of the space.
I'm not saying that you can't have the additional parking spaces. What I'm saying is that we need a plan to approve, and if you don't have the plan to approve, I'm going to suggest that you're best off at least going with the plan that you have so that you can open the business with some parking and come back to us to modify it when you're ready.
Yeah, so you want me to paint it to what Mount Wachusett had submitted?
You know, unless you have another plan for us in time. Yeah, we can approve something that we don't have a plan for. It's like, you know, it's like saying, I have this really great idea, I want to open up an ice cream stand, but we don't know where it's going to be, what the traffic flow is going to be, how many people are going to be there. If you just say, you know, I want to open up an ice cream stand, that's great. It doesn't give a thing for us to approve. Okay, and that's not assuming there's anything wrong with what you're proposing, but we can't approve something that doesn't exist. That's why, you know, I think from the beginning in this, we were looking for an engineered parking plan so that we have the dimensions laid out on ground. Very often, we have, you know, a property holder that comes in and they think that they know what it is and they can fit, but then when it measures out, it's not the same. That's why it needs to be measured and drawn as an engineered plan. And I know that's an expense you are trying to avoid. I completely understand why, but it is required in order for us to approve it.
I mean, I'll be honest with the investment at this point. I don't mind spending the money. It's just all the hurdles that I've had to go through to get to this point, you know what I mean? And unfortunately, when I, you know, did my property on John Fitch, it took me over a year before I could even say I could be a business there. Then building permits, it's discouraging. The time that it takes to do anything in this town, it's almost, that's why people don't want to do it. You know, so all I was simply asking for was just a little leniency, a little more time, and I'll get somebody, I'll pay. If it's five grand, I'll pay it. If it's 10 grand, I'll pay it. I don't have a problem with that. But for me to paint the lines to Mount Wachusett, what they had proposed but never executed, to me, just doesn't make sense for the flow in the property. It's going to be tough. The lines are almost against the bay doors. I just don't see it working. I think if you worked in this industry, you'd have a little under- I think if you worked in this industry, you'd have a little understanding of what I'm saying as far as being able to get in and out.
Um, I would, I would tell to you, Mr. Bovee, that, you know, I've been a business owner for a very long time and I have a lot of sympathy for, um, business owners and the difficulties of that, um, and the need to only incur the expenses that, um, you need to, you need to. And I know that in the particular rental of this building, um, it was a very expensive proposition for you to, um, secure it before you had the permissions to operate the business. Um, but it, you know, understanding that, I, I think the first time you submitted the application, this is something that was mentioned to you, um, in, that an engineered plan was needed. And, um, you know, I, I understand putting up the expense off, but it's something the board needs in order to approve.
Yeah, I understand that.
It's, it's up to you, it's, it's up to you whether you want to paint the lines now or you want to wait until you have a plan and only paint them once.
Yeah.
Um, I'm just trying to look for a way to you, for you to get your business going sooner.
So I, I understand what you're saying. In the expense part, I had mentioned it, but it was never a concern. The biggest thing is getting somebody to commit to come down there and start mapping everything out. So just cause I phoned somebody doesn't mean they're gonna say, yeah, I'll be there tomorrow. You know what I mean? It's been two days on, on everything, so, you know, if, if somebody's able to come, I have no problem with paying whatever it is at this point to get it done. So in the meeting, you know, I never said it was a problem with paying it. I said, it's a lot of cost going into this. And I said, why can't we use what's already there? That's what I said. And I said the Mount Wachusett plan, you know, from my standpoint...
And, and that's what was already there. That's what you had, um, which, what we went with because we were looking to try to help you get this business open, so.
Mr. Bovee?
Yeah.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
What's there presently? The old Montori parking plan or...
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So, one of the conditions is that it'll operate under the plan approved for the school.
As of right now?
Yeah.
So I can only have five employees or less?
I don't think the parking plan has anything to do with employees. Am I incorrect?
She mentioned in the first meeting, if that's all you have, you're not gonna have 10 employees.
No, I think what we're just referencing is the parking plan.
Yeah.
We're not restricting how many people can come to your site, how many vehicles you can have.
Where do they park?
Where they park, but we need to, I think, in the near future, um, have a concrete plan if you want to change.
Yeah.
And present it to us. And then I think the other component is, um, one of the conditions is that, um, they will not be conducting motor vehicle sales, right? Which doesn't mean you can't request it.
Yeah.
You most certainly can.
Yeah.
But if you're going to, I'm just thinking out loud, right? If you want to pre- present us with a revised plan or a final plan.
Yeah.
You probably want to think about that piece of it and say, here's my parking plan for as we voted, right? For the business as is. And it sounds like you're gonna request from the board to also include some automotive sales and maybe have a secondary plan that shows us how you're gonna display vehicles, how you're gonna conduct business, an all-encompassing plan, right? So probably an A and a B.
Yeah, I mean...
But in the meantime, you've gotta have a plan so you can operate, which was kind of agreed to.
Well...
And, and, and I appreciate your past, you've, you've, you said the last time you, you know, got a business up and running in the city, you had a lot of delays.
Yeah.
I think this board worked really hard to fast-track and, and, uh, get you up and running. I mean...
I've spent over 200 grand in the past two...
You know, as much as we have our purview to be able to assist you. So...
What's, what's on the parking lot now? Is there...
Like, I wanna say it's...
Are there any stripes on it?
There is, yeah. There's stripes, yep, stripes, handicap spots. I'd have to do an exact count. It's between 43 and 45 spots, I believe.
You can't use that until you get the new plan?
That's what I wanted to, that's what I wanted to do.
So...
Why can't it?
Can I think out loud?
Sure, please.
So, uh, as I understand that, uh, we have a plan that may not be the plan that you want us to have.
Yeah.
So you need to update us on what, on what you want to have.
Absolutely.
So the, the point that the board is making is that we can only vote on what we have.
Yeah.
So that's the point. So if you want us to have something else, then give us something else when you're ready.
Yeah, and that's what I'd like to do.
The, the, the spirit of the, the point that the, the chair was making previously was, in an effort to accelerate, if you move forward with what you have.
Yeah.
Even though it's not your end state, it's your current state, it's the, um, it's the Mount Wachusett plan.
Yeah.
Like, that was just one, one avenue of trying to help you get going faster.
Yeah.
But if you want to give us the point that Mr. McLaughlin's making now is...
Yeah, give us another plan.
Give us another plan.
With the amendment to change the...
So that, that's all we're...
Sales.
Yeah. Not trying to box you, I'm just trying to find a way to help...
I understand that and that's what I want to do. As soon as somebody gets back to me, I'll pay them to get the plan done. I'll walk the property, I'll have them do the measurements. My thing is, I don't want to go back to Mount Watch, uh, Mount Wachusett's plan right now and then have to go back to what we get created. So I'd be fine with, if we were able to paint over the lines for the time being and we put a continuance on this date, you know what I mean? So I can come back with a modified plan. And if it's not acceptable and we have to go to something else, then I will. But I'd like to do that versus rebuilding everything to what Mount Wachusett had submitted. It doesn't make sense for the flow or anything in there. It's gonna make it difficult. So I was just asking for some time, because I have reached out to people. I haven't been trying to delay anything. But obviously, there's been a lot of focus in a lot of areas of getting things done so I can open and operate. And it's just been setbacks. So I'm not asking to, you know, disregard what was said, you know what I mean? I just want to be able to make it so it makes sense for the business and the property without have to go through this whole parking plan. If I can get something done in two weeks, I'll come back and submit it and then if you guys want to say, hey, we're gonna put you in the next meeting so we can all review this together, I'm fine with that too. I'm not trying to delay it by any means. I just need somebody to get ahold of me so I can get it done.
Understood. Thank you.
No problem.
I'm still confused. I'm still confused. Why can't we use the plan that's there now?
That's what I said.
Just leave it there.
Yeah.
Until you bring us a plan.
Yeah.
That's going to change what you want it to be.
Exactly.
Along with the amendment to...
Yeah. That's what I'm asking for, if we could just leave it for now.
Okay. Madam Chair, any feedback on, um, Mr. Byrne's comment about maybe just kind of delaying?
Um, not delaying, just using what he has now until he can get someone in there to give us a new plot plan or a new, uh, parking plan and then he brings that to us and then he changes the lines and the paint. Just use what he has now.
So, um, the condition we're really talking about is the striping of the spaces.
Correct.
There's striped spaces there now.
That's it. And, um, uh, he was to stripe the spaces according to the Mount Wachusett plan by June 30th.
Correct.
Um, and so I, I, I just... We approved something that he's not gonna be operating under. Um, I, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I, I guess I'm feeling a little frustrated with this. We asked for it to be done by June 30th and I know that there's been delays and I'm, it, you don't, at this point, have anybody getting back to you for a new plan. Um, I'm not sure when, uh, this is gonna be accomplished, what it would look like. And, um, you know, I guess if the board wants to, uh, grant a delay, that's fine. Um, uh, but I, I just think, you know, we're kind of out in left field here because what we're doing is basically approving a plan without seeing it. Um, so, I, I, you know...
How about this, Madam Chair? Um, so we can move this along.
Yeah.
He has until the 30th, June 30th to complete, uh, the request. Why don't we do, uh, another review in June or July and see if we can nail this down?
Why don't we do the review in July because if he's having that much difficulty getting ahold of somebody to draft a plan for him, I doubt that it's gonna be ready, um, and available for the June meeting.
Agreed. Okay.
What, um, what dates would we have available for July?
July 9th.
I will be gone for two weeks on vacation. I leave the June 28th, come back the 18th of July. It's a little over two weeks, but...
Well, that would put us out to September.
Yeah.
But I think it's September, you know, we're gonna be at that point where need to have you up and running and have a concrete plan.
Yeah, absolutely. I plan on bringing you something way before that, but I mean, if we push the date to September, my plan would be to try and have something in weeks, a month, you know what I mean, before I even leave for vacation. The biggest thing is not stripping it twice.
Okay. Would you be available virtually on the 9th, July 9th?
Yeah, we could do that. Yeah, that's fine. Absolutely.
Okay. All right. I have a motion for continuance. Any other comments, Madam Chair? Does that work?
Um, that does. I, I just, um, I, I believe that the applicant is gonna need to present a, an application for modification for a different use if we add on the, um, auto sales. And I just suggest that he check in with the building commissioner on that one.
Okay. Great. And think about the, the real plan.
Yeah.
Right? Plan A is gonna be business as requested and granted.
Yeah.
And Plan B would be the addition to the automotive.
Yeah, I would just have whoever's gonna do the parking lot plan, I would just have them map out two different plans.
Two scenarios.
Yep. One that's gonna be just for all the automotive side, auto repair, and then one that shows where cars would be displayed, that makes sense, and with the automotive parking and custom parking.
Perfect.
Um, as far as the building commissioner, so, you know, apply for another zoning permit or...
No, just go down and talk to the building commissioner as the...
Yeah.
Um, chair had requested to see if there were any hurdles for you.
Any preferences with car sales, like in that location.
Yeah.
Okay.
The reason is that when we have certain kinds of modifications, including a granting a new type of use, the state statute requires us to advertise it and send notice to a butters.
Yeah.
So if that is, um, uh, and I think it is a major modification, um, you should do the application so that we can make sure there's no obstacle to granting it.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine. I'll do that. So as of right now, you know, running the business is not a problem, just getting the modified parking plan, something by July 9th and doing a virtual meeting is what we're agreeing on as of right now.
We'll be here, you'll be virtual.
Yeah, yeah, but that's what I mean, you being virtual.
Yeah.
But that's where we stand with everything.
That way, we can just keep it, keep it rolling for you.
I want, listen, I, I'd like nothing more than to slide that piece of paper over right now, trust me.
Okay.
You know what I mean, to just be done with this and not have to keep going back in, but...
Great. Any other comments, questions, concerns of the board?
No.
Could I have a motion for continuance on July 9th, please? And that's gonna be...
Good idea. Second.
That is gonna be from, um, any board member except for Mr. Byrne, because he was absent that night. Motion by, by Mr. Reynolds. Okay. Uh, second?
I'll second.
Great. Um, roll call, all those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds? Mr. Talbot?
Aye.
Mr. Gallagher?
Aye.
And, Madam Chair?
Christine? Aye.
Great. Thank you. We'll see you July 9th.
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right. Moving along. CBA 2023-35, Louis Rodriguez, 513 Williams Road. Mr. Rodriguez here tonight. All right. Doesn't it appear the applicant's here? Um, is it continuance? This was first heard in January, right?
January 9th, Mr. McLaughlin, and second hearing on March 12th. Um, there was an extension requested by the applicant on that meeting.
Okay, so I'm gonna open it up.
Um, I think we should...
Madam Chair, your thoughts?
I think we should consider granting leave to withdraw.
Okay. Um, is there anybody here in the audience with regards to this particular petition? And that is for 513 Williams Road? Okay. Is there anybody here virtually? Could you please raise your hand? Do not have anybody. Um, just gonna go around the board. Mr. Gallagher, thoughts? Comments?
Uh, none, other than I just want to, um, agree with Christine on this.
Mr. Byrne?
I'm really torn here. This fellow comes to our city from out of town. He builds a, not a shed, but a barn on his property and he builds it without getting a request and he puts it close to the, to the line. After it's done, we find out about it. We send him a letter and he ignores us twice already. And now he's not here for this. Why don't the building department find him? Maybe that'll get his attention.
Okay. All right. Let's just check. Voting members that night, um, was the chair, Christine Tree, myself, Joe Byrne, and Brian. Um, tonight, are your recommendation, Madam Chair, with regards to voting members? Um, Mr. Talbot is a full member and could vote, provided he's had a chance to read the minutes for any of the prior hearings, correct?
Um, as long as, uh, he has not missed more than one meeting, I believe Mr. Talbot was not yet a member on the January meeting, which is the only meeting at which there was a full discussion.
Okay.
Of this issue.
Which means vote, no vote?
So, uh, Mr. Talbot, unless you can verify that, um, you have read in full the minutes for this meet, this in, from the January meeting, um, then I don't think you would, um, uh, be eligible to vote on this matter. Um, have you read them?
I have not read the minutes.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll move ahead with a four-member vote?
Yes.
Um, I guess discussion, I, I kinda agree with Mr. Byrne.
You know, we have applicants apply, and we get multiple no-shows. And I'd want to move forward with the vote up or down on this particular case at this point.
Wait a minute.
So it's?
Vote up or down on what?
To move ahead and vote versus
Oh, what?
Leave to withdraw. Correct. Well, it has to be a vote in the affirmative.
How can we let this building stand there and stay there? And just vote away? He came in here asking for a variance after he put up this building
Yes.
on his own volition.
Right.
So what are we going to do? Let him keep the building there and just say, we're going to let him leave to withdraw? Can't do that.
So.
My recommendation is that I agree with you, Mr. Byrne, that I would like to move forward with the vote tonight.
To what?
Not give leave to withdraw, but actually vote on the case. To either approve it or deny it.
The variance?
Correct.
Okay. I'm with you.
Okay.
Let's do it.
There are other members that need to provide some feedback. Madam Chair?
I think we're witnessing a coup in the making. So let me say that procedurally, I guess I'm going to ask that we have a vote on the motion to withdraw first, and then if that fails, that we would then go to a vote on the matter. I think, I think we're, most of the members have the same feeling that they haven't been provided sufficient evidence by the applicant that would support a variance. The difference between the two actions is really just, if he's granted leave to withdraw, there's still no permission for that structure to be there, and he has, he's subject to enforcement, he just has the ability within the next two years to resubmit a new application. He doesn't have the two-year ban. And where the applicant, you know, I'm just going to say at the first meeting, while he did construct without permission, did submit the application, came to the meeting and was interested in compliance, I just don't think he met the qualifications. So where he's not appeared at this last meeting, you know, if he's granted leave to withdraw, he has another opportunity to come back and present his case, but if he doesn't, and until he does, he's just subject to enforcement. That would be my point of view.
Okay, Mr. Gallagher, any feedback?
Yeah, I'm with Christine on this.
Okay.
It's a two-step. Do step one first.
Step one, if I could have a motion to, this is going to be interesting. Motion to give leave to withdraw.
May I make a motion? I never get to make a motion. So, motion on the application for variance for 513 Williams Road to grant leave to withdraw.
Okay, could I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Second made by Mr. Byrne. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we have two. All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye, so now where do we go?
Motion fails to carry.
Okay.
So then we'll have a motion, which I'll make, a motion in the affirmative to grant the variance requested on 513 Williams Road.
It's a special permit, just for the record.
Shouldn't be, it should be variance.
It should have been a variance.
Okay, I'm just reading.
Yeah, because it wasn't a non-conforming property.
Okay, so let's just say ZBA 2023-35.
Motion in the affirmative to grant the application under ZBA 2023-35 for 513 Williams Road.
Can I second the motion?
No, you're the Chair.
That's right.
I'll second.
No, you're going to make, you've made the motion, it's been seconded, all those in favor, for the record, aye.
Aye.
Yourself?
Yeah, aye.
Mr. Byrne, aye. Madam Chair?
Aye.
That's three ayes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Aye.
That's four ayes.
Before we complete this vote, I've just made a motion in the affirmative to grant the application. Does anybody, including me, want to revise their vote?
Sorry, Madam Chair. It's a new twist at every meeting.
It is.
Okay, discussion before we move to vote, okay? With regards to this, I look at it this way, we give leave to withdraw, okay? If the applicant doesn't meet the criteria for the variance, which I'm sure the board has thought about, right?
Yeah, and he doesn't.
What are we doing? We just kicking the can down the road? What's going to change? If the building's in the same spot and it doesn't meet the criteria, what are we, what are we doing?
Response, Mr. McLaughlin, we're just allowing the applicant an opportunity to make his case, knowing the criteria. And that's not to say he didn't have an opportunity at the last two, that last meeting and this one. It's just allowing for the opportunity that there's something we don't see that the applicant could present.
Okay.
But we've taken the vote on that already.
She always wants to be nice, she'd like to be nice.
Okay. All right, so the motion on the table, to be clear, is in the affirmative to grant the request under 2023-35.
Correct. Mr. McLaughlin, perhaps we could take the vote by aye or nay this time?
So, we have a motion, we have a second by Mr. Byrne. Okay, all those in favor?
Wait, 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 explain the vote, explain the vote. A yes vote means what?
You're approving.
You're approving
The variance.
the request. Okay? And nay is you are?
And nay is I'm not approving.
That's correct.
And the request is that we approve the variance.
Correct. So, your vote, Mr. Byrne?
I will not give him a variance.
Okay, so that's a nay. Madam Chair?
Nay.
Okay, and Mr. Gallagher?
Nay.
And myself. Okay, so we have no?
Yourself is what?
I am a nay. Okay.
Zero to five.
All right. We're done.
We're done.
Application denied. Thank you, folks, for helping us get through that one. It's always a new twist. Thank you, Madam Chair. All right, so we are on to ZBA 2023-15, Nadella Antonio for the property at 348 Elm Street. And that's on for 6:45, and we are at 7:42. We are moving right along.
Yes, we are.
Hello, Board.
Okay, so you submitted a plan?
That is correct.
When?
I've submitted one maybe a year and a half ago, and then I resubmitted a new one with a few small changes recently, a few weeks, like a week ago or two.
Okay.
I can have, I have an extra copy as well.
Okay, so Sharezy, maybe you can share with Mr. Talbot?
I have an extra copy too, if you want.
We're ready to roll. Okay. So, this has been a long case standing, right?
Unfortunately, Sari has.
Yep. So before we even kick this one off, I just Okay, in light of time, I want to ask the board. We just received this. Do we want to move ahead tonight, or do we need time to digest this and?
Of course, we need time to digest.
Look at the site and kind of
Yes.
Have a little bit of time to look through it.
We do.
Because my recommendation is I don't want to move ahead tonight with something I just received, I'd like to have some time. Can I get some feedback from the Chair?
I believe that the modifications we recently made to the rules state that unless we receive a plan by the Thursday before, the applicant will automatically be continued to the next meeting.
Okay.
And I'm also going to note that the plan that I'm looking at is dated November 30th, 2021. It does not state any modification dates to it, so either I am not looking at the current plan, or the plan has not been recently modified.
That's the old one, Madam Chair. The new one is dated February 2nd, 2024.
So I would just state that's yet another reason why I would not be inclined to move forward, I would be inclined to continue this to the next meeting, checking with Mercedes first on what we have for schedule.
Question, when these older plans got submitted, did they go by the board at all, or no?
Okay, I'm going to kind of, let's go back in time, all right? In the beginning, when we started this project, you submitted a plan to the board. And I think I'm going to get this right, but please, somebody correct me if not. This was a pretty complex project, and at the time, I think everybody's concern was the building caving in more than anything.
Correct.
You submitted a plan. I think we had discussing that we were more or less in favor of a two-family project, but we're not there yet. We didn't approve the plan, we didn't accept it, you submitted it, and at that time, we were really concerned about first steps, getting the building down, and second step is, is the foundation, I think there was intent that you're trying to reuse the foundation.
That is correct, we are.
And so, you know, that's, as you know, delays in time in getting things done brings us to this, where we are now. So, we really haven't accepted anything
Correct.
at this point. And, you know, everybody needs a chance to digest.
I agree.
So, we're looking at putting you out to July 9th anyway?
Yeah, that's fine, I just had one question.
Sure.
I have a lot, like 100 feet away that I'm going to use for parking. What is it that I need to do? I heard I have to do like a 100-year lease, that way I can combine them together so I can make that work for the parking? Is that something that, what do?
Mr. McLaughlin, I could answer that.
I would say let's kind of discuss it all next month.
Okay.
Instead of like, starting to get into it, because we'll go down the rabbit hole.
All right, just I can have that paperwork ready next time I come, but no problem.
Madam Chair?
The building commissioner can talk to you about it, but the arrangement that you're going to want to use is an easement that is granted from one property to another.
Okay, thank you.
Cool. Anybody in the audience tonight that would like to speak for or against, or any questions regarding this? Great, is there anybody here virtually? I'm going to go around the room. Brian, your thoughts on, do you need more time?
Yeah, definitely need more time to review the plan.
Okay, Madam Chair, Mr. Reynolds, more time? Mr. Byrne?
More time.
Mr. Talbot? Okay, if I could have a motion so that we can move this to July 9th, please?
Just give me a second here until I find a number. Make a motion on 2023-15. Continue until our next meeting, July meeting, did you say?
July 9th, yep.
July 9th.
Okay, could I have a second?
I'll second.
Great, and all those in favor, by roll call, Mr. Byrne?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Sure you want me to vote?
Sure, vote anyway.
Okay, you're right, thank you. It's while you're here. Madam Chair?
Aye.
Mr. Gallagher?
Aye.
Mr. Talbot?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Great, see you July 9th.
Thank you, have a good night.
Great. Okay, next we have ZBA 2024-3 for Dallas Abala, property at 376 Clarendon Street. Do we have any communication with regards to that? Great.
Somebody here for Clarendon Street?
Yep.
Yes, yes, Dallas is here.
Okay. Mr. Chair, can I have a second? Can I have the floor for a minute? Yes.
Yes, Mr. Byrne?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Bella, last meeting that you were here, I sort of came down hard on you for the condition of the building, and I want to take that further. I went home and I received a real harassment from my wife saying that I was much too hard on you, so if I appeared that way, I do want to apologize. I laid in bed the next morning after being beat up by my wife, and I thought to myself, well, if Dallas really gets mad at me, I don't have any proof that what I said was actually true, because I didn't have any photographs. So I quickly threw on my clothes, ran up to the property, and lo and behold, it must have been about 8:30 in the morning, there were two crews there of eight people cleaning up that property. They took away two pickup trucks full of trash and property and miscellaneous junk that was around the property, and they cut back all the grass, and the property looked very good. That's the quickest response I have ever had to anything that I've requested while I sit in this chair on the board. And I do want to thank you very, very much for your response, and
Thank you.
welcome to our city. If the rest of the building is going to be taken care of in that manner, we're going to welcome you with open arms.
Thank you. I'm glad to hear that.
Thank you, Mr. Byrne, appreciate it. Okay. So this is a continuance for a special permit. Do you have any updates for us, Dallas? I know that you've been in communication with the building department, you have some things in the works?
Yes, I was, I hired a lawyer to do a declaration of restricted covenants for the parking that are located on 313, and they haven't completed, well, they completed it, they just wouldn't provide it until I go sign in front of an authority and pay. I'm planning to do that this Friday.
Okay, so is it wise to think that you probably need some more time? And need to come back in a month or so?
To provide that document, yes, I can provide it for the next meeting, and also I already have plans and for the property, we're going to paint the whole, the whole property on the outside, the whole building.
Okay.
Also, I want to say that on the plans that we have in there, we have, like, the kitchen was like moved, and I decided to keep it as it is at the moment, not to move all those plum beans and all those electric and all of that, just want to keep it as it is.
Okay. So will July 9th give you enough time to be able to pull everything together?
I believe for next month, I have everything already, I just need to get that on Friday, the declaration of the restricted covenant, and the plans are already done too as well.
Okay.
For the 376 Clarendon Street.
Great, so we will put you on for Great, so we will put you on for June, June 6th? Okay.
Okay.
Okay, just want to get some feedback from, from the board with regards to that. Mr. Reynolds?
Happy with the progress, interested to learn more on June 11th.
Great. Mr. Byrne?
I'm fine. I, I'm still concerned with the parking being so far away from where the residence is.
Yeah, and we'll discuss that if you're in favor of June 11th.
June's fine.
Mr. Talbot?
No, I drove by the property last Saturday, it does look pretty great compared to what it was.
Okay. Mr. Gallagher?
Sorry about that. I appreciate the cleanup, and I look forward to reviewing this again in June.
Madam Chair?
I also appreciate the cleanup very much. I did want to ask, we had discussed at the last meeting whether you would be able to, because your project contained so much renovation, were you able to use the procedure of going through the Building Commissioner instead of coming from, in front of the board?
Could you repeat that one more time? You're saying if I consider to go?
There is, there's a procedure through the Building Commissioner, where if you renovate at least 50% of the floor area of the property, plus renovate the facade, you do not have to come to this board, you can just have it approved through the Building Commissioner. And we sent you back to the Building Commissioner to talk about whether you could qualify through that alternative, and I was wondering whether you, whether you had done that and whether you were able to qualify.
I'm not sure if I've been able to qualify, not sure who has that decision. I'm sorry?
The Building Commissioner has that decision.
Okay, so, I went in and I was talking to, I met with Felix, and we were talking about all the things that have to be done on the building, on the outside, in order to qualify for that, and most, that, more than 50% of the property will be being changed or updated.
Right.
So I believe I qualified, yeah.
I would just, I would direct you to go back to him, you should, I mean, leave this pending with us, but if you are able to use that procedure, it can happen quicker for you.
Yeah.
And you won't have to come before the board, so I just, again, direct you to see if it's possible to use that rather than the procedure here, okay?
Perfect, I will do that, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I did have a conversation with the Commissioner this evening, and he did say that that is an avenue they're discussing. So, she has both options still on the table till we, till we get to that point.
Glad to hear it.
Yeah. Great. Any other feedback, comments from the board? Great. We need another extension? Okay. Dallas?
Yes?
We're gonna need a mutual extension to be able to continue this? So, are you okay with that verbally?
Yes.
And that would be until June, what do we do, one day after? Okay. That would be till June 11th, and Mercedes will email you the document if you don't mind signing it for us?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
We would greatly appreciate that, and I think with that, we're able to, to move forward. Voting members tonight will be all present except for Mr. Reynolds, I think, right? Is everybody here at the last meeting?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher? Great. If I could have a motion, please?
I make a motion on ZBA 24-3, be continued until June 11th, 2024.
Okay, motion was bid by Mr. Byrne, have a second?
A second.
By Mr. Talbot. All those in favor, roll call, Mr. Byrne?
Aye.
Mr. Talbot?
Aye.
Mr. Gallagher?
Aye.
Madam Chair?
Aye.
And myself, I am in favor as well. Great. Dallas, thank you, we will see you on June 11th.
Perfect, thank you so much, and you guys have a good evening.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay, next case, ZBA 2024-15, Garrett Patterson for the property of 481 Mechanic Street, here for, I think, dimensional variance and relief as well for an accessory dwelling unit. Okay. Good evening.
How you doing?
Okay, and for the record?
Garrett Patterson, 487 Mechanic Street, Pittsburgh, Dallas.
Susan Patterson, 487 Mechanic Street.
And?
Robert Theryan, other architect, representing us and representing the Pattersons.
Robert, how do you spell your last name?
Theryan, T-H-E double R-I-E-N.
Okay. Now, I do apologize, Madam Chair, this got continued, we were looking for what information?
This actually got refiled, so we granted leave to withdraw the last time that this property was before us, because the relief requested was not correct under the zoning ordinance. We also had a question about whether the lot was buildable, given the shape of the lot, and I was able to, in that time, determine this falls under a rear lot provision, so it is a buildable lot, even though the, it has the kind of pork chop entryway to it. But, the, the applicant was directed to reapply, asking for relief from certain provisions of the accessory dwelling unit provision. So we are now hearing this as a first-time application.
Okay. So, just so we all understand what we're looking at, it's stating a dimensional variance from certain terms or requirements. Do you know what those specifics are? I'm asking the Chair.
Under, under 181.32, I think 3212, which is the accessory dwelling units provision, they are asking for a dimensional area, variance, to increase the floor area of the accessory unit to 1,400 square feet from the maximum 1,800, 800 square feet. The second relief they're asking for is, again, within the accessory dwelling unit provision. There's a limitation of either a 15% increase on gross area in an existing structure, this is new construction, so there is not an existing structure to be increased, and that's really the essence of the third request, which is to waive the fact that the accessory dwelling unit be part of an existing structure, as opposed to part of the new construction that they are proposing.
Okay. Sounds a little complex.
It is. It is. We're trying to fit a square peg in a round hole here, so.
Madam Chair, a question. With this increase in this accessory apartment, why aren't we just saying that this is a two-family?
So, a two-family is not allowed, I believe, in the district. And, and, Mr. Byrne, I apologize, because again, I don't have all of my materials in front of me here.
Okay, very good, no problem.
But, yeah, I believe this is not an allowed use within the district, and it's a residential district, so that we cannot have a use variance in a residential district.
Okay, well, you got us started, Madam Chair, I appreciate it. And now I'm gonna turn it over to the applicant, if you could tell us a little bit about the petition, please.
Robert Theryan, thank you for hearing us tonight.
That, my friends, was the mighty Oz.
Thank you again for having us again. Thank you, Madam Chair. What happened here is, I'm an architect, and these were my clients, and they had a family profile. I presented a lot of this in March 12th meeting, but I'm happy to go through it all, the whole presentation we have. But the bottom line here, what really has surfaced, is that the current lot is in a single-family residential district, and that district allows an accessory-use apartment by right. The, it's in close proximity to other districts that allow two-family, so the, the problem that we encountered was the bylaw as prepared gives additional dwelling units by right in this particular zoning district, but it doesn't, it was all intended and designed for the purpose of adding on to an existing home. This is a vacant lot, and Garrett, his father and mother, Susan, had bought that years ago, so to be, to secure any encroachment from the commercial area that was there, and also to protect their own property, and hope to build a home for them, and then a home for their son, Garrett. Garrett and, Garrett's father and Susan's husband passed away, which put a catapult wreck into that whole plan, so now Garrett wants to have his mother be able to live with him, rather than move somewhere else off-site, and so he's building a brand-new home, and, and it's a large home, it's totally compatible, very complimentary to the neighborhood. I have drawings of it to see, it's, it would really be a nice home in the community and enhance the area, and it has a lot of square footage on the main floor, and it has a topography with a full walkout basement, which, all of which, the design that we presented to them, works very well, for him to be able to have a garage high enough that he can work on his vehicle, and have a presentation to the street, that would be just like a normal single-family home. So what happens is, because of the fair, the square footage of the main floor plan, he has an enormous basement, and so we would just like to have, Susan have the opportunity to have more than the 800 square feet allowed, because he already has it available and is paying for it. And it's not an addition, and it has nothing to do with 50% of, of an addition of an existing home, because it's not an existing home. So, the bylaw itself doesn't address that circumstance, and so that's why we floundered around, because, because the AD unit is allowed by right, we, the, the city of Pittsburgh says, wow, you don't need to apply, it's by right. And then, and then the other department says, well, this is a two-family, and so it got very confusing as to how to get to a, a, a presentation board like you, to find some relief to solve this particular problem, or concern, or desire, or need. And so, we, at the, at the suggestion of this board, resubmitted now, as a variance, which is the only option we have, on the square footage limitation, and we're asking not for the full basement, but for 600 more square feet of what would normally be allowed as an addition on an existing home. That way, the Pattersons will have the full benefit of the use of their entire basement, and, and that's what they had hoped to do in the beginning, in the onset, of trying to, to, you know, build a new home. In the very onset, everybody was aware that two-family units weren't allowed in this district, and so it really was the only option we had to find a solution and remedy for them, and it is a good one, and it works well, so the only question is, why? Why wouldn't he be able to use his whole basement? It's a right anyway, in other words, there are additional family units, dwelling units in the neighborhood already, this is a brand-new building that's gonna enhance the neighborhood, the foundation is there, is gonna be paid for, he would just like to take the advantage of that opportunity, and, and so there's no obvious reason why it wouldn't, of anything that would be detrimental about doing that. And so that's why we're here before you tonight, I mean, we have a lot of presentation material, we can show you the floor plans, we can show you the site plan, everything that in the design process was thoroughly reviewed, and, and, we spent a lot of time with the site engineer and the survey people, and really, and we had to deal with conservation and, you know, the whole, all the other things to make sure that everything else was addressed. And so everything is addressed except this one question, and so I, I just cannot come up with any reason to say why this would be detrimental to anybody. And so that's why we're here tonight. I'm glad to respond to anything that you want to see about the site, about the design, I mean, from the street, you would never know, there were two units there, whether it's an additional dwelling unit, or, and Stephanie doesn't have that image at all, it's designed to fit right into the neighborhood, it's not even visible from the road, and you look at the surrounding properties, I mean, the neighborhood in general, there haven't been any recently built new houses, so this would be an exciting thing for the neighborhood, and, and then not far away, we have other kinds of properties, we have commercial shops, and we have, you know, the, where the hospital used to be, so, there's a church across the street, so this would have, in fact, driving by it, it's a panhandle lot, so you drive down Mechanic Street, with that driveway there, you wouldn't even know there was a building in the back, it set off the road. Do you have the site plan in front of you?
Yes, we do. Yes, we do.
If you look at the site plan, look at where the driveway is on Mechanic Street, the Pattersons currently owns the lot on the right, which is a vintage home that was built, I don't know, eight, in the early 1900s.
You mean the left?
Huh?
Left?
On the left of the driveway, yes.
Okay.
And it's very small, and they've been living in this house ever since they were married. And so now, here's an opportunity to have a brand-new house, the house they have needs quite a bit of repair, it's really small, even for the two of them now, and the three of them all lived there one time. And the three of them all lived there at one time. And Garrett is, you know, he's an upstart electrician, trying to build his company. So he has like a van. And so this would be in the underground garage. And he'd be able to service there and he can have some of his equipment there. He's not running a business there, just a place for his business equipment. And so the solution that we came up with was pretty, pretty good. And they're very excited about the project.
Okay.
And then we have photos of the neighborhood. At the last meeting, nobody objected to what we were doing. The Pattersons approached some of the neighbors to get their input on it. Most of them were very complimentary about it. So there was nobody objected that I saw, or nobody appeared at the March meeting. So we're here to ask if you feel, if it's a reasonable request because of the specific nature of this building? And there is no legitimate reason why he cannot expand the living area for his mother?
Thank you, Mr. Theron. We're going to go around the horn with the board. And I'm sure they'll probably have some questions for you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Great. Before I kick it off to the board, is there any member of the audience that's here tonight that would like to speak in favor against or has any questions? Okay. Going to go to virtual. Is there anybody that is attending via Zoom? If you could please raise your hand?
None.
Have none. Great. So at this point, I'm going to kind of turn it over to the board. Tonight, we have a full board, so that's a good thing, right? We even have one additional board member, so he's going to be asking questions as well. I'm going to start with Mr. Reynolds.
No questions.
Mr. Byrne?
Come back to me.
Great. Mr. Talbot?
My only concern, I guess, is the third bedroom slash office. Not so much the square footage, but, I don't know, in my opinion, an accessory apartment should have two-bedroom max. That's just my opinion.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Gallagher?
Yes, thank you, Michael. I'm just kind of curious, and maybe this has already been answered, but why the need over 800 square feet to go to 14?
So we have two questions so far. Okay. Number one, concern about an accessory dwelling unit having multiple bedrooms. And what was the other concern?
I believe it was Brian's about the square.
Okay, I'm sorry. Mr. Gallagher's had concerns as well. If you want to address both of them?
Yes, well, thank you. There's nothing in the bylaw or the building code that would restrict it from having three bedrooms. I'm sure if that's a, was a mandatory requirement here, the Pattersons would have to modify that plan so it only had two bedrooms.
Now, we're talking the accessory apartment.
That's correct.
Accessory apartment request has three bedrooms.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
That's too misty. One is, and then a third one, which could, is potentially being construed as a bedroom here, except it was an office.
Right.
But whatever you're going to do, it doesn't matter.
Right.
So that was.
It's a bedroom if it has a closet. If it doesn't have a closet, it's a room.
And the other, the other real issue is that they're going to be leaving the house where they live now. And they have all this furniture. And so they have three bedrooms of furniture, so it all made its sense. So, and then what was the other question, ma'am? I'm sorry. Madam? Chairman?
Mr. Gallagher, if you could repeat your concern or question?
Yes. I'm wondering why there's a need above 800 square feet for the accessory apartment?
Well, one, they can use the space. The idea was that, like I said, they have a full house now. She already knows what she wants to bring with her in her basement. And that was part of the request of three bedrooms. So it was what they were asking for, and they do have a use for it. There's no other intent here. There's no other planned family moving here or, so it was to be a spare room. There's no other motive in mind. She wants her own private place, and he wants his, but they want to be close nearby. And Garrett can be there with his mom.
Okay, thank you. Madam Chair? You're up.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Have you addressed the criteria for variance? Because when I am looking, I'm looking at your letter that you sent dated March 14th. And as you know, the initial criteria for consideration of a variance are shape of the lot, soil, topography, or structure. Can you address that, how you meet that criteria?
Yes. I think, again, the topography with the sloping lot, the parameters there with sideyard requirements and the conservation, the issues about a panhandle lot, all dictated what could be done. And then the physical, and so it, just by nature, we took advantage of that and took advantage of the walkout contours. And if you look at the site plan, there's not much disruption to the topography at all. And then considering the other parameters and, you know, I tried to address everything that I thought would be a concern here. So again, it's one of those projects that is in a gray area as, you know, do we use the requirements from two-family? Do we use the requirements from the zoning variance? Do we use the requirements from special permit? So there's, it just doesn't fit in a real nice slot that everybody can address. And what's unique about it, it's a new building. And so, and I mean, what's, what's the difference here? If I, if I have a third flex room that could always be used as a bedroom, and I just call it a studio or something else, that really doesn't change anything. You know?
Okay.
Still have a walkout basement and.
Mr. Theron, I think that's an argument that we should disregard the ordinance. I'm not really receptive to that.
No, I'm not suggesting you disregard anything, ma'am.
No, we're just asking that you speak to the criteria of the variance, which is very specific. And, you know, you brought up some good points. I'm going to try to keep things rolling along, so I'm going to move it over to Mr. Byrne.
I'd like to know, I'd like to know one thing.
Yes, sir.
Do you have access from the second floor to the basement? Is there an inside staircase?
A common front entry. If you look at your plan, I think on the third page, what, what sheet is that, sort of the elevator?
Well, what I'm saying is, what I'm saying here is, if there isn't a staircase that goes down from the first floor to the, to the accessory apartment.
Yes.
I'm saying that you could beat the whole system here. You don't even need us if you make that spare room a storage room for the upstairs and have an 800-square-foot apartment.
Right. Which we can easily do.
Well, then why don't you do it and avoid, avoid coming year? Thank you very much for that.
We could easily do it. I discussed that with my clients. But we wanted to make a real presentation here of what we really wanted to do. And if we can't do three bedrooms, then that's not an issue. You're correct. We can call it storage, okay? However, we wanted to be upfront with you, show everybody in the neighborhood what we would like to do. And the Pattersons.
But it seems from what you're talking, from the way you are addressing the situation that we're talking about, about a variance, you don't seem to attack the variance at all for what's necessary to get a variance. We have a, I, I made this for myself because this is a, it comes up quite often. If you'd like to look at this, this is a variance, variance criteria questionnaire. And those are the questions that have to be answered in order for you to get a variance. And you haven't addressed any of those particular answers to those questions.
I addressed the shape and topography.
And that shape or topography has nothing to do with the, with the variance you're requesting.
In your opinion, which of these criteria points best suits our.
That's what's in the law. Those are the criteria points that are in the law. The law states that you have to have one of those particular problems in order to get a variance.
All right. So item three.
Okay. So I want to move this along tonight, right? It's, you're in the field, and I'm assuming this isn't your first visit to, to a zoning board, right? So if you need some more time to look at the bylaws and come back to the board with some answers to the criteria of the variance, I'd like to give that to you. But I don't want to sit here and kind of mull through it tonight because we have other applicants that are waiting to come before the board. So what do you think you would like to do? Do you need some more time to address what you're presenting with regards to the criteria? Or do you want to move ahead tonight with a vote?
I have a question first. Do we have to meet all four criteria?
I'm going to let you answer that. You're presenting, but I do need to move the meeting along tonight. So it's your call. If you guys want to wait, we can put you on for next month or the month after. You know, we just, our expectation would be that if you applied for a variance, you would be prepared to speak to a variance.
We do not nullify. I substantially derogate from, what we're asking is certainly hitting the fourth point of not nullifying.
Okay. So again, before we go down the path, are you prepared? Have you had a chance to read it ahead of time? Or are we going to kind of do this on the fly tonight?
Yeah, we've, we've seen this before.
Yeah, we've, we've answered it, I think.
I do think we addressed these.
Okay. All right. I, I don't need you to read them because we're all kind of familiar with it. I just want to kind of move things along. And you, you feel that you've been able to address them tonight?
Yeah.
Okay. So can we move it along with the board?
You want to proceed, yes?
Yeah, I mean, we kind of need an answer.
Can I have one? Repeat back.
Can you remember these?
Yeah, I've seen them.
All right. We would like to continue.
Okay. Just want to make sure you're comfortable, but also that you're prepared. And if you need more time to, to review criteria, that we give you that time, you know?
Can I ask him? Yeah. Are you good? Okay. Let's go.
Good. Okay. One more kind of go-around. Any other questions of the board members? Mr. Gallagher?
Sorry for the delay. No, Michael, I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Reynolds?
No, thank you.
Mr. Byrne?
Good.
Mr. Talbot?
No additional questions.
Madam Chair?
No, thank you.
I don't have any questions. I appreciate, you know, you taking the time to make a, make a good presentation. What is the square footage of the main home?
I think it's on the site plan.
Minus the accessory.
Minus the, the main footprint?
Just the, the main dwelling unit? Do you know how many square feet is? Just roughly.
That should be, are you talking about the footprint now or just of the main unit itself?
The main living space for the primary resident.
So that would be maybe around 2,000 square feet, a little over 2,000 square feet.
Okay. And how many bedrooms?
Three bedrooms, I was there at first, yeah.
Okay. And then the, the second unit is going to be a basement unit?
Yes.
That's correct.
And it's going to be 1,400 square feet?
That's correct, yeah.
And it's going to have three bedrooms?
Right.
Okay.
Addressing item one there on the topography, a major thing I didn't address, I talked about the walkout basement. The other thing is, that was the only real location we could put that building, based on the setbacks, conservation, and the topography. In fact, the, the foundation work is going to be very expensive and extensive in order to accommodate the building proper, let alone any other uses. So that was item one. The other item I remember, I think I presented, I don't see any detrimental use to the neighborhood or, nobody opposed the project. The architecture was designed to be compatible, enhance the neighborhood, and actually give some new life to it. So, so I, and I described how you go by the driveway and you barely even know there's an access road because the house is so far back from the lot, I mean, from the street. So there was nothing I saw that I think would be a negative thing to the neighborhood proper. In fact, in my opinion, to be an enhancement.
Okay. Anything specific to the variance? Because I do want to close and move to deliberate.
That was, you know, one of the things, was it going to be detrimental to the neighborhood? And I cannot see on any level where it would be, and nobody opposed the project. And the other topic was what, Matthew?
Well, I'm not sure what you, I was going to say one additional thing regarding the purpose of the ordinance here for accessory dwelling units. The reason why it's, we put this in an accessory dwelling unit and not in a, as part of the single-family unit itself, or not as indeed a two-family unit, is because the purpose of the accessory dwelling unit bylaw is specifically for having an additional dwelling unit to rent without adding it with the number of buildings. We're not adding to the number of buildings because the building is already going to be built anyways.
It's only one building?
Yeah, absolutely. And additionally, it'll provide alternative housing options for elder residents, which is the exact purpose of what we're trying to achieve here. And thirdly, again, we're, we're doing this as an accessory dwelling unit because the topography kind of dictates that we create a two-story house that's kind of, has the effect of a split ranch where it's kind of, you know, sunk in into the topography rather than having it sprawl, you know? And it's, and it's cheaper that way, too, less foundation work. So.
Okay.
That's, that's the reason we're doing it as an accessory dwelling unit. That's the reason why we're coming before you today.
Yeah. Okay. So now I'm going to close and deliberate, going to turn it over to the board, okay? Madam Chair?
Mr. McGlottson?
Before we close, Madam Chair?
Last question. And let me just say, that was a good presentation on the fourth qualification for the variance. Can you connect the soil shape, topography, or structure criteria to the hardship you're claiming? What is the connection between those two things?
The hardship. Well, the structure.
How does a condition create the hardship?
The, one of the situations is that Susan Patterson is a retired, single mom. And having a basement with walkout. And having a basement with walkout capabilities is ideal for her. Then if you look at the topography of the lot, you could say, well, we could have had an option to go up, which would not function, it would not make practical sense when we already have a sloping lot that we can take advantage of. And again, putting a two-story structure there, if you look at the design, it's a half-subterrane building. So on the front and full in the rear. So it looks like a raised ranch from the street. On the backside, it looks like a two-story house. Otherwise, we would have to design a two-story structure plus the foundation. So in all practical standards, this was a very wise building profile to use, you know?
Thank you, thank you. Any other questions, Madam Chair?
No, I'll save for discussion.
Okay, so I'm going to close and deliberate. So we're turning it over to the board. We appreciate the presentation. As we go around, Mr. Reynolds is our alternate tonight. I do want feedback and input with regards to, you know, the criteria of a variance. I'm going to start with Mr. Gallagher.
No questions at this time.
Okay.
Or comments.
Reynolds? Mr. Reynolds?
Just briefly, I'd support this. I think that based off of the topography of the lot, that created the design. Based off of the design, that created the square footage. And I would support this.
Mr. Talbot?
I'm not going to say I'm in disagreement with any of it, but the third bedroom concerns me, and not because of you guys, but what happens 15 years down the road, 20 years down the road, you sell the house, and now it is a two-family. And you're kind of imposing that on your neighbors.
Mr. Byrne?
My only concern.
That's a wonderful point. That's point one. Point two is I have not seen any circumstances described that are actually in warrant of a variance. This can be justified by the construction of the property when they're building a new building. There's no hardships here.
Miss, Madam Chair?
Thank you. I just want to say as a comment that I think the applicants are well-intentioned. I think they're trying to accomplish a very good goal, which is to build a family dwelling. My problem, like Mr. Byrne, is connecting the topography issue to the hardship. The real hardship here is two. Number one, that you're trying to build an accessory dwelling unit, and our ordinance seems to require that it start off an existing building. That, I think it's possible, although I think it's a stretch, to support the argument that there's a hardship creating to the structure in that you would have to first build one and then modify it. I do not see any connection between the topography or the lack of a structure, or the soil, or the shape of the lot that would require an increase in the 800 square feet that is allowed to an accessory dwelling unit. And I think that is related to the personal circumstances of the applicant. And I think that the arguments that have been presented are, well, the hardship is that we want to build a two-family and we can't. Because that's pretty much what this is. That's not the hardship that a variance can be created on. You know, my consideration of this is that I think there is enough grounds to grant a variance from the requirement that there be an existing building. I do think the argument that was made at the end regarding the intent of the ordinance is very, very correct and persuasive. I think this is completely in line with the purpose of the ordinance. But the increase in the size of the accessory dwelling unit, I don't think is supportable.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've been on the board since the inception of the accessory apartment. And I think it was, you know, a wonderful modification to the bylaws. So many of us are meeting, you know, have older parents, elderly parents, and it's been a great relief for a lot of us throughout the city. I don't think, as a board member, I've ever voted against one. When the accessory apartment bylaw was written, you know, there are some specifics within it, which was, you know, particularly Section A, Number Three, enabling owners of single-family dwellings larger than required for their present needs, particularly elderly homeowners, to share space and the burden of homeownership. So, you know, the intent was large homes take care of mom and dad or a family member. Supposed to kind of be seamless where the house doesn't have the appearance of. And, you know, there were some specifics to keep it small. Because what's happened to Fitchburg over the years is a lot of these big, larger, single-family homes, over time, have become two, three. Oh, there's, you know, a little section in the basement, let's make it four. And it's created some long-term problems within the city. Parking, congestion, burden on the school systems, whatever. This was written very well where its intent is specific. The chair made a great point. There's no correlation of the hardship for soil shape and topography towards this request. There's no hardship at all because the building doesn't exist. So there's no hardship. I think it's great that you're able to, you have a lot that you're able to build a home with, and I think it's great that you're able to put in an accessory apartment. A little perplexed when you talked about, hey, we live in this tiny house over here, but you need three bedrooms for the accessory apartment. You know, again, 1,400 square foot, that's a second unit. And really not concerned about what the intent is. I know that it's going to be used for what you've mentioned, but there's going to come a point in time where that house gets sold, and now, you know, what does it end up being, you know, in the future? So I really have a hard time getting there myself, you know? Having said that, I think, is everybody ready to put a motion on the table and the affirmative? And Madam Chair, are we good with one vote based on the new request?
Do you mind breaking it out between the two requests that are in this variance? One is for the 800 square feet to be increased to 1,400. The other is for the requirement that there be an existing building. Can you separate those two votes for me?
Yeah. Maybe clarify the second?
Sure.
I get the eight to 14, that's, I understand that.
Yeah.
But the second vote is-
For A, any to the existing structure to create an accessory apartment should not create more than 15% increase. I'm sorry if I speak out of turn, I just-
I'm right here in front of me.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair?
The second vote would be to grant a variance from the requirement that an accessory dwelling unit be built within an existing structure.
I guess I'm trying to understand that. I mean, they have a matter of right for an accessory apartment.
Within an existing structure.
Okay, so the vote is going to be to grant a special permit for an accessory apartment?
Mr. McLaughlin?
For a new construction.
This is not a, we're in, can you confirm the district that we're in? Just so I have everything in front of me. This is in RA.
RA.
And it's permitted by right in RA.
Correct.
So the motion would be to grant a variance from the requirement under 181.3212 that an accessory dwelling unit be built onto an existing structure.
May I point out something to the board?
No, we're closed, sir.
No.
No.
Okay, so the first motion on the table would be to grant a variance to allow an accessory apartment from 800 to 1,400 square feet.
I think you want that to be your-
So moved.
I'm sorry, Mr. Reynolds?
I would think you'd want that to be your second one.
Yeah, I was, as it was coming out, I was going, yeah. Okay. So the first request on a motion is to grant a variance for an accessory apartment from the requirements under 181.3211?
3212.
3212.
To be built in an existing building.
That it be in the new construction, right?
Okay, I'll go by that. As Mr. Reynolds stated.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Mr. Talbot? Okay. So this is going to be a vote in the affirmative, just so everybody's clear, because it's getting late, okay? All those in favor? Mr. Byrne is a nay. Mr. Gallagher?
Nay.
Mr. Talbot?
Aye.
In favor?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Aye.
In favor?
In favor.
Myself opposed. So that doesn't carry. Second vote is going to be a vote for, to allow an accessory apartment. It's going to be 1,400 feet.
Square feet.
Square feet versus 800 square feet as requested. So that's relief under 181.3211, correct?
Yeah.
And I'm going to need- 181.3211. I'm going to need a motion in the affirmative.
So moved.
Okay, a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Talbot. Okay, all those in favor?
No.
Mr. Byrne, nay.
Is he awake? Brian?
Sorry about that, nay.
Mr. Talbot?
Nay.
And Madam Chair?
Nay.
And myself, nay. So unfortunately, it doesn't carry. You have the full right to build a home on that property with an accessory apartment up to 800 square feet as a matter of right.
Thank you for your time.
And we appreciate the time. We appreciate what you're doing for your parents. And we hope you have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Have a good evening.
You too.
Okay, the final case tonight is ZBA 2024-16 for Brian Roberti at 776 Ashby State Road. And this is a special permit under 181.333 and 181.313 to extend a pre-existing, non-conforming commercial greenhouse. Mr. Roberti, how are you this evening?
Good, thank you.
Okay.
Best tomatoes in Fitchburg.
What's that?
Best tomatoes in Fitchburg.
Thank you very much, Joe. Well, thank you.
Just before we kick off.
Yeah.
Okay. We've got six members tonight. We have one alternate, one alternate, it's getting late. And so we're going to have five voting members, okay? And just ask you to present your case a little bit. I'm going to ask the members of the audience if there's any questions. We'll go to virtual to see if there's any questions, questions from the board members. And if we all make it where we need to be, we'll be able to-
Get out of here.
Close and deliberate and make a vote tonight.
Okay.
So thank you for your time.
Thank you for having me. Well, for anybody that doesn't know who I am, my name is Brian Roberti. I'm representing the Carriage Shed, a farm stand nursery. 27 years in business in Fitchburg. I deal with mulch, safety chips, plants, and I dealt with the city for 27 years. I dealt with Mayor Bean, Mylae Wong, Whitney Wong, Dina Tally, and now Sam Skola. So pretty much been here all my life for 47 years. Been doing what I'm doing for 47 years up there. What I'm trying to do is, I have a building that is dilapidated, that is my livelihood, and I'm trying to replace and extend a pre-existing, non-conforming commercial greenhouse with a 24 by 84 prefabbed commercial greenhouse that's not existing greenhouse dimension that I have now is 25 by 50 feet. Pretty much, that's what I'm trying to do. That's what I'm trying to achieve. I owned the house next to me for 47 years. I bought the property of my store. Next to me is a farm, which is on a commercial, well, not commercial, farmland that is under a grant now. So there's nobody to the left of me. So there's nobody around me, and that's what I'm trying to do. So I'm trying to add a 30-foot addition to my building.
Thank you. Great. Going to ask if there's any member of the audience that is here to speak in favor of this petition? If you could please approach, state your name, and some brief comments.
Thank you, Marissa Fleming, Ward Five City Councilor. I'm asking that you approve this special permit. The Carriage Shed has been there. I've been living up there for 27 years, which is about how long this business has been in business. So they are a fixture, they conform to the area. Brian keeps the property well-kept and his dad before him. And I ask that you approve that because it's just right in line with what we want in rural residential. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Mary Jo Bohart, the Economic Development Director for the city. And I worked closely with Mr. Roberti as he was preparing to submit this. It's wonderful, what makes Fitchburg unique are some of our farm and farm stand type of businesses. The locals that have patronized his business for years have enjoyed what he does and the fact that the existing greenhouse has served him well, but is now dilapidated. And because of modern methods and things, he can access a modular version of that. And that's what's led him to make this proposal. So I hope the board will look favorably on what he seeks to do. It will continue to strengthen what he has been able to do over the years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, any other member of the audience? Is there anybody here virtual? Could you please raise your hand? None? Great, going to turn it over to the board. Great, going to turn it over to the board. Mr. Gallagher?
Yes, thank you, Michael. The business is always well-kept, and it truly is an asset to the city. To improve that greenhouse would really make that place look even more spectacular. I noticed when I was out on my site visit that the building, the existing greenhouse seems to be sagging. To see a nice building that would be 10 feet actually back would allow him more space probably for his retail plants and stuff like that, and I'm strongly in favor of it. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. Mr. Talbot?
No comments.
Thank you. Mr. Reynolds?
Sure, what's the rear setback? What's the relief that we're looking for? Rear inside?
He's not.
25.
Say again?
I think it's 25.
25.
Yeah, but he doesn't need a relief, because he's just, he just wants to put a new building on it, and it's not zoned for that, so he wants to replace the building that's there already.
So we're not, we're not talking about the dimensional issue?
No, there's no issues.
It's the use.
Just the use, that's it.
No questions?
Thank you. Mr. Byrne?
Let's get it done.
Madam Chair?
Yeah, I am curious as to why there is not an issue with the rear dimension, and this may just be the way that I'm looking at this plan, but the rear, the rear setback is 50 feet in RR, the proposed rear setback is 22 feet, and the diagram appears to show that there is an existing greenhouse that is almost in the middle of the property, and then the new greenhouse is moved far to the back. And if that's just not clear, and the rear, new greenhouse is really currently 22 feet from the rear of the property, then my question is answered. Can, can the applicant clarify that, Mr. Roberti?
Yeah, can you, I'm sorry, it's been a long night, I didn't anticipate being here late as I was here. Can you please say that again?
Sure, I appreciate that, Mr. Roberti, it's currently 2:00 AM where I am. Let me see if I can share my screen. I don't suppose that worked, did it?
No, it's blurry. I don't see anything on it, no.
Okay. I am looking at the plan that was submitted, and the plan shows Ashby State Road in the front, and the rear boundary in the back of 146.34 feet.
Okay.
And it has two buildings, the old and new depicted on it. And there's a to-be-removed pointed to the old building, and then the new building seems to be set far back, much closer to the rear boundary. Is that correct?
Well, it's 30 feet longer, yes, the building, so yes, you would be correct.
So that now there's going to be a setback of 22 feet in the rear, which is not compliant with the 50-foot setback that is required?
Yeah, correct, but like I said, I have bought the land next to me, but to what you said is correct. The land is in a trust, there's 300 acres, and my neighbor is Fitchburg High School, which is a mile away from me, and that land will never ever be used because it's in a trust. I could have asked for an easement, but I didn't want to bother anybody, I grew up on that farm, I milked hay, milked the cows, baled the hay, and I did everything on that farm, and there's over 300 acres, because Fitchburg High School came up and put that high school, which it should have been in downtown Fitchburg, but they came into the rural setting. So there is nobody around me for acres, so for the 25 feet, I don't understand, you know, again, I understand what you're saying, it's code, but there will nobody ever be behind me, aside of me, and I have bought the property next to me for 47 years.
So the form, the, is Arnold Sumner still the owner of the property in the rear?
Arnold and Howard are dead, the fathers are dead, the son is Howard Jr., Mark Sumner, and six other siblings.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And Mark said to me, you got my vote to say you can have the 25 feet, but we know how that works, you just can't come in here and say, we have 25 feet. So there would have been six of them, and I could have asked for the easement, but for 25 feet, when there's over 300 acres of land around me, and nothing will ever be built around me, I don't really see where the problem is.
The problem is that it's in violation of the ordinance, and I'm trying to determine the relief that you require to build the building that you're looking to build, Mr. Roberti.
Okay, and for 27 years, I've been there for 22 feet, I think one foot per year would be kind of all right.
I don't think there's a provision written into the code that you get an extra foot for every year of ownership, but I, I do like that concept.
I do too.
You know, is there, is there a reason related to the land why it couldn't be moved forward?
Well, first of all, when I started this in November, this process, I'm already dealing with two commissioners. The first commissioner left when I started this process, and I went to talk to him, and he wasn't even tell me, had the courtesy to tell me, he was gone. So when I went to talk to him, five days later, he went down the road talking to his lunch pail. So now I wasted seven months, I wasted time, money, everything that is tied up on this project for 30 feet, that I don't really think it's a real issue, being a staple, dealing with your city of Fitchburg, with the Parks Department for 27 years, buying mulch, safety chips, and like I said, I dealt with Mayor Bean, Mylott, Whitney Wong, Deana Tally, and now Sam. I've been there for 27 years, and damn it, I think I paid my dues.
Mr. Roberti?
Yes.
We want to, we're going to get through this, okay?
Yes, well, we will.
Let's work together.
Yes, we will.
Okay. This is what I think I see. The letter from the commissioner addressed the non-conforming use, Madam Chair, but it didn't address...
Right.
...the setback. So it looks like the applicant made an application for a special permit relief for non-conforming, increase in non-conformity, but did not address the variance piece of it, because the letter didn't appear to reflect it. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Yeah, I think that's a very reasonable analysis of the letter that was issued.
Thank you for that response at 2:00 in the morning. So, where do we go from here?
A suggestion would be, you know, whether or not there's a dimensional issue that requires a variance relief. The applicant would still require relief in order to modify a pre-existing, expand a building, or expand a use that is non-conforming. And we could certainly take a vote on the relief that he has requested, and just be specific about the relief that is being granted and the relief that is not being granted.
Does, does it need a second vote, and, does it, does it need an amendment to a variance and a second vote?
I... We, we don't have a variance application before us. We have, we have a special permit application. I would just, I would state it as a condition of the motion. Not, not a ruling one way or the other on a variance, just state that one of the conditions would be that no, no dimensional relief is granted, that would require the granting of a variance. Just a clear-cut statement, Mr. Byrne, that...
Say that one more time.
Yes, the condition would be, the allowance of the special permit does not include the granting of dimensional relief, which would otherwise require a variance.
Okay. Does not include the what? I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
Dimensional relief.
which would otherwise require a variance.
You got that, Mike?
Yes, sir.
Any other comments?
None.
Okay. We have a plan that was submitted, Mr. Roberti?
Yes.
And I, I see that it's, it's not signed or dated or stamped.
No, because I wasn't going to do that, because in case I got denied, I already paid $3,000-plus dollars, so for the extra five, I wasn't going to have it stamped. So if this got approved, I could have had the stamp in two days, so when I went to see the building commissioner, whoever is now in charge next, I would have had the stamp planned for him, and it would have been right to him, but I'm not going to give another $500 when I'm already tying up money, wasting money, time, sleepless nights, on a project that for 25 feet, even though I get it, it's what it is, but I'm not going to pay more money to get denied, to have a stamp, to have me go wave and talk to my lunch pail. So for the five extra $100, it can be stamped in two days, if I got approved, if, and if fortunate to, it would be stamped in two days, to go and talk, bring it to the commissioner, and then we go from there. So that's what the whole deal is.
Okay, so if the board votes favorably...
Correct.
...this petition.
Correct.
You have no problem with...
No, that plan is not going to change at all, because that is a real engineered plan to a guy that didn't know what to choose it. It's what you have right there. The stamp would be there in two days, not even. But I'm not paying more money to get denied, because that's grocery money. Money's tough, we all know this. I work hard for my money, like you. I'm up there selling tomatoes, like Joe said, he spends thousands of dollars at my store, him and Linda, a staple to the city, bringing good things, and you guys say you want business in this city, but I don't know if you do or not, to be quite honest with you.
Brian, Brian.
Well, no, no, but no, I can't.
Yeah.
No, I can't. I'm up to $10,000.
You're coming, you're coming here to us...
I get it.
And you're asking for something, and you're trying to act like...
No, no, I don't, because you know why...
Slow down.
Well, okay, but you know what, Joe? When you're paying $10,000 for taxes a year...
Respectfully, I'm chairing the meeting tonight, right? We love your passion. We wish we had more people with passion like you.
Yeah, it would be a great city.
It will be, it is.
It will be, it will.
So this is what we're going to do, we're going to work together, okay? I appreciate your feedback, I think it's great that you said, hey, I'm not going to spend the money unless they have...
No.
So, again, we want to move this along for you, right? So I want to close the meeting, if nobody on the board has any questions, right? I'm going to keep Joe on a short leash, and...
I'll keep him on a short leash, too.
We're going to, we're going to go to a vote.
I apologize, but I'm very passionate.
No, I love it. We need more people that are passionate.
See, Italian in me.
That's good.
Yeah.
So, you're okay not spending the money, but you're okay if you get, if we vote in favor, and it's just a formality for you to submit to the building department?
Most certainly, 1,000%.
Awesome, we're on the same page.
You know it.
Can I close and deliberate?
You sure could.
Awesome, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments, questions, or concerns of the board?
We're deliberating now?
I'm about to close and deliberate, if that's okay with the board.
Yeah.
Because I'm just here to help get through this for the night.
Go.
Are we good?
Good.
All right. So, Mr. Gallagher, if you could please speak to the special permit, we're in close and
Well, I am in favor of the greenhouse, I got to say, I think it would be a big improvement to the area, and I'll leave it at that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Reynolds?
I, I'm in favor of it, too. I'm not voting on it, but I'm, but I'm in favor of it, so you should know that. I think you've got a lot more people on your side. The passion's wonderful, the Bruins are on tonight, they could probably use you.
They sure could, because they're in trouble.
Yes, they are.
Yes, they are.
Yes, they are. So, I, I think that the, the extending the, the non-conformity, you know, that makes sense to me. I think that it would be wrong of the board and the applicant to ignore the dimensional point. I don't believe personally, I got a problem with the dimensional point either, it's just, it's, it's ink on paper, just kind of screaming at you, look at it, so we shouldn't, we shouldn't be silent about that, or be afraid to talk about it, because that, because that is what it is, and there's some, there's some reasons to, to go along with that, so. That's all I got to say.
Mr. Byrne?
I'm all for it.
Mr. Talbot?
I'm in favor of this.
Okay. I am as well, and I think there were two conditions that were brought up, one is that certified plot plan be provided to the building department, right, prior to...
Both certainly.
...building permit being issued, and the chair also had one condition, and that is, if, I'm going to read this again to see if I've got your language correct, the allowance of the special permit doesn't include the dimensional relief, which would otherwise require a variance.
Correct, and then the applicant should be reminded that the special permit will need to be recorded before a building permit would be issued, and that after the decision of the board, 20 days elapses after the decision is filed with the city clerk as an appeals period, that's statutory provision.
Yeah. So after the decisions are written and signed, there's a 20-day appeal period, if, if, it was, you had an abutter that objected to this, gives them a chance to, you know, seek relief through the courts, and after that 20 days, then you can go to the building department and...
Mm-hmm, thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you for your time, sorry for being so passionate.
It's okay, we're going to vote.
But again, that's how I am.
Right now, we're going to vote.
Okay.
Want to stick around?
Yes, I went in this long, so I might as well finish.
Thank you.
Because I don't sell myself short. Life's too little to be short.
All right, so I'm going to ask for a motion, and along with that motion will be the two conditions that I had mentioned, okay? And just for the record, Mr. Reynolds is, as an alternate, will be sitting out the vote. And if I could have a motion, please?
One second, let me find it.
Guess Joe's motion.
What's the number, yeah?
There you go, Joe.
ZBA what, 24? I make a motion for ZBA 24-16, be grant a special permit with the conditions that...
You can just, as stated, that it be this one and that one.
Certified plot plan provided in the, to the building department be signed and stamped within two days, and...
No, no timeline, just prior to building permit being issued.
Prior to the building permit being issued, and the allowance of...
If you can read my line.
Michael.
I'll read it. Again, allowance of a special permit does not include the dimensional relief, which would otherwise require a variance. So could I have a second, please? So could I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Talbot. Roll call for a vote, Mr. Byrne?
Aye.
Mr. Gallagher?
In favor.
Madam Chair?
Aye.
Mr. Talbot?
Aye.
And myself as well. Motion carries. Special permit has been granted.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your time and your passion. Please go rub some off on the Boston Bruins.
We will.
Thank you.
We will take it home.
Awesome. Okay, I think we have one addition to the night. Maitland Ishmael for the property of four seventy-nine Water Street. And I think this is a review of a special permit. Conditions for everybody? Oh, did you give it to me, too?
Yes.
So that means it's in this pile, the mess that I have. Okay. And this is? Okay. Okay. Thank you for coming in so late.
You're welcome, thank you.
Been watching the evening. Okay, so last case of the night. This is a review. I think you're requesting a final review?
Yeah.
Right, based on your application for a two-family?
Yeah.
Okay. Any, any feedback from any departments? Okay. This is, these are what, multiple pictures of? Is there more? Is it in my pile?
Yeah.
CSB.
You can go through everything.
Everything's here. Just give us a couple seconds, folks.
I didn't, I, I'm looking for, I haven't seen.
Did everybody get a packet with some pictures for tonight's?
Yes.
Okay. So that means they should be here. Been a long night.
You want mine? Need mine?
Okay. Got it now, you got it, Mike?
Okay, all right. So I made a site visit yesterday, okay? And I just took some, is that his? No, I don't wanna take his. I just took some photos for everybody to, to make it easier for this evening. So maybe just kick it off and tell us about where you're at and all that.
I think the project's complete. Everything, it passed all inspections. And according to your demand by, from you guys, the zoning board, I did everything. From the roof to the basement, everything is, is all updated. And the house is, um, according to the code of Massachusetts, two thousand twenty-four, the house is, is the current code. And I should say, it's based on how, I see houses in Fishburg, that should be one of the best houses running in Fishburg when it comes with efficiency and from windows, to, to everything. I put everything in tag and I passed all inspections, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sure, we'll have some questions, and we'll just kinda come along to it. So anybody here in the audience that is here to speak for or against, or any questions? Is there anybody virtually that is here to make any comments regarding this? There is none, so, you know, what we're gonna do is we'll, we'll kinda go through some of this, the conditions, and, you know, we'll take it from there. Madam Chair, it's getting late, I wanna try to move this along for you because it's, I think it's tomorrow where you are, right? Your recommendation to just go through the conditions, or?
Yes, I, I would just, I would just go through the conditions that we have. And if, if there's any area of concern that you had on your visit, just to raise it, please.
Okay, great. Okay, so I'll go through these, just kinda give me some feedback. Property's gonna be operated as a two-family with no more than two bedrooms per unit.
Yes.
Okay? Property shall be upgraded to current applicable building code as required under the said code. All work shall be completed in a good and workmanlike fashion and properly permitted, inspected, and certified to be complete. You there?
Yes.
Okay. Construction proceed in three phases. I guess that's probably irrelevant at this point because we're pretty much down to the end on that. Safety inspections have been performed, correct?
Yes.
Comply with all requirements of the building department after inspection for safety.
Correct.
Petitioners shall ensure all floors are level.
Yes.
Installing jack support beams and other elements necessary to bring the floors to level.
Correct.
Did you have to do any of that work?
Yeah, I had to do the whole, like, well, I had to put sixteen lony columns, all brand new.
In the ba, in the basement?
In the basement.
Okay, great.
And the whole floor was level.
Great. What about the issue everybody had about water and resolving the water issues?
No more water. No more water in the basement. You talking about the water in the basement?
Yep.
The basement has been, there's concrete in the basement right now.
So you poured a floor?
Pour the floor, concrete.
Okay.
Yeah, no more water.
Okay. Phase two, replace roof, doors, windows, siding, exterior trim. An engineered plan indicating a location is so storage at the rear of the property. Did you ever submit us that plan?
Yeah. Every plan was submitted, and I even have the his guy plan because the his guy is an engineer that give, give me the code for the insulation, the code for the windows,
Yep.
the code for the doors, and give the code for, for the E, for the, for the ERV, which is a new, it's a new code by Mass. And I had to put that on the two unit.
Yeah.
I even had to put electric charger on, on that unit.
Yeah.
To the point where the inspector was like, this was really too much. And I said, yeah, that's, that's, that's a new code, yeah.
Okay. One of the items that I mentioned, we requested that you replace the siding. You opted not to replace the siding, right? You, you scabbed in some replacement vinyl and then painted the vinyl, correct?
No, this, this, the siding we replaced on white, and I had to spray it on my own color that I like.
Right.
I needed attractive color. I wanted to do that color because if I was supposed to order those colors from home-
Well, that's okay, I'm just-
Yeah.
Yes or no?
Yes.
That way we can get you going.
Yeah.
Phase, phase three, petitioners shall repair the granite wall in the rear of the property so it's both safe and stable without danger or collapse onto the property.
Talking about like the wall at the back?
The granite wall that abuts the neighbor.
No, that wall, the last time we were here, we, we did have a conclusion about our wall, and you guys said that was fine because the engineer mentioned that that wall could not be moved because if that wall moved, it's not even my wall, it belongs to the neighbor.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you feel you met that?
Yeah.
Okay. Petitioners shall install landscaping in front of the building including plants, shrubs, or trees typically installed in residential uses between the structure and the parking spaces.
So-
So basically, between the house and the parking, you are required to do some green space and some landscaping, and then on the corner as well. I, I took some pictures, obviously that hasn't been done.
So, the building, there is, um, there's a state, um, I don't know how to call that, there's a, there's like a little, little gate, like a fence, that's from the road. And the only thing I had to do is just to make the curve, and that's a little place, and I don't think we can put, we can do any landscaping on that part. The only thing is just grass, and there's natural grass on it.
Do you have a copy of this?
I do have a copy at home.
So did you kinda go through it and say, yes, I did this?
Yeah.
Or no, I didn't?
Because-
So this one's a no, right?
It's not a no, it's because there's no space for that. So the condition you, you, you gave me, there's no space for me to do, to do landscaping on that.
Okay, well, well, we're gonna keep going, but I think really what it is is the board gave you, granted you a permit-
Correct.
-to allow you to do this.
Yeah.
Right? And along with it, we talked about conditions that we mutually agreed to-
Yeah.
-to do some upgrades to make the place look good.
I did.
So I think what it comes down to is we had requested that you put in some green space, and you agreed with us, but you, you didn't do the work.
No, along the line, the green space-
Which would have required you to cut out a little bit of the blacktop and put in a border and put in some plantings.
I already put, um, like the pavement, the little pavement right there. If you go right now on the building, closer to the park-
So those, those ten cobblestones, that's your, that's what you're considering this?
That's what it is, because there's nothing, there's not much I could do on that part, it's-
Well, you could if you wanted to.
Because-
But anyway, let's keep going. We'll get through this. Uh, let's see. Petitioners shall install green space for residential use in the, in the rear yard. So I think what we were talking about there was we didn't want the rear yard to be parking. We had requested that that become a lawn or grass.
You talking about the one, like, uh-
In the, in the rear. So presently today, that is still blacktop, correct?
Because it's tar.
Right.
Yeah, so how you want me to go pour, have to rip off all the tar and put green and put grass on it? I mean, some conditions are just on, it, it doesn't add up, I'm just being honest.
You know what, I'm not gonna disagree with what you're saying, but what I'm gonna disagree with is when we, when you were before the board and we discussed all these conditions, everything was, yes. And now it's, I didn't do it, and I don't think I have to do it.
No, not as if I cannot, I don't have to do it, it's because when you give me condition and I go back and I look at the condition, I'm, I'm wasting money for things that's unnecessary. I can't be putting money for a project that-
No, no, I get it. You're a developer, your job is to make as much money-
That's a lot of money. And I renew my loan two times. I spent almost like thirty-five thousand dollars.
We're not gonna argue with you, but we're going back to the beginning when you came before the board, and the board, in conjunction with you, came up with conditions that everybody agreed upon. So now here we are, and you're asking us for a review to say, I did everything on this list. I would like to be able to move ahead with my project. So we're collectively, you and the board, are going through these conditions, and now you're telling us, I didn't do this one, and I don't think I have to.
No, I didn't say I didn't do because I don't have to. I did not do them because, because it just could not meet up with, with your request. Because when I go back on the field and I'm looking at something, it doesn't add up. And that's the thing, I did not do it. I, I cannot go on the back of a yard and start ripping off a tar, call like the machine or everything's removed from the tar and put it dead on it. I mean, that, that doesn't, that doesn't, we're not gonna go to like, like, I can. I'm just being honest.
Let's keep going.
Okay.
Okay? So petitioners shall install landscaping in front of the building including plants, shrubs, and trees. That wasn't done. Petitioners shall install green space for the residential use in the rear yard. You said you didn't, you weren't able to do that, correct?
Correct.
The number of required parking spaces shall be reduced to three as designated on the plan, which will be striped.
Correct.
Okay? Snow removed from the parking area shall be stored at the rear of the property as designated on the modified engineered plan or removed from the lot. Do you have a copy of that plan by any chance? Or do I? Is that right here?
From page.
Okay. Okay, great. Property to be kept clean and debris of overgrowth earned construction. I think we're past that point, right?
Yeah.
Review date, we're past that point. Applicants shall submit a five thousand dollar deposit to be held in a special account and may be dispersed or applied under the direction of the ZBA as compensation for any qualified consultation employed by the ZBA regarding the project. Was that ever done?
The five thousand? Yeah, I give the five thousand and I'm-
Okay, just asking.
Yeah.
I'm just asking. If the project is not satisfactorily completed within the eighteen months' date of the special permit, forfeited funds shall be allocated to the building department's demolition fund. Madam Chair, do you know where the timeline is on that? If that was met or not met?
I believe we're, the eighteen months have not yet run.
Okay, great. Fourteen, petitioner to install a chain link fence at least four feet in height with posts sunk in the concrete into the ground along the side rear yard between the rear yard and the driveway right of way.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do that.
Come on up, if you don't mind. Do you have the pictures? Okay. So, this is what you put in, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
The chain isn't made of fence, and that's a wood fence.
Okay, so this is not a chain link fence. This is four posts.
So you're talking about like a chain, like?
Chain link fence, okay? Let's get through this together. This is two pieces of wood and a crossbar.
Yeah.
So number one, it's not a chain link fence. You know what a chain link fence is, right?
No.
Little diamonds. You know, you see it, it's very common.
Like the fence, like that, when it put on the yard works?
No. If you put in a pool, you have to put in a chain link fence. Crossbar, bars that go in the ground, and the diamond-shaped wire that connects.
Yeah.
Okay? Yep. So basically, a chain link fence, a lot of times, is constructed using these posts.
Yeah.
Here's the problem. That's on the right of way. Okay, I'll help you out. So, here's the side of your house. Right, you go up the, walk up here. The fence is supposed to be along here. You put it in the middle of the right of way. You can't put anything in the right of way because a right of way has to be left open for both you and the abutter. The next door.
But the original fence, the original hole was the same way after the fence, right? That's where, when I got the property, there was a fence right on the side. That's where, when I got the property, there was a fence right on the side. And if you go back to the picture right there, it's not on the other side, right? It's on the side of the land, because...
It's in the middle of the right of way.
Not in the middle, like a little bit on the side. Because there, like the wood one, that was the original, I was there, it had a wall, so I followed it. It's the same part, and so the middle one is like rough, it's on the other side of the land, of my own land. That's where it is. So, I just maintain the original, and I also add on the other one, close to it, in my own yard, yeah. So, for the chain fence, because I was like, since I already have, um, the wood one as original, and to put out like the middle one, they more kind of going than, it's like five feet under the ground, and covered, I just...
Okay, we're gonna keep rolling. I think that's probably it. Special permit, um, shall expire if ownership is transferred from the permit holder, prior to the issuance, um, of certificate of occupancy. All right, so, that's where we're at. Um, I had some pictures taken, or I took some pictures, that I just wanted the board to take a look at before we move ahead with the vote. I don't know if, um, did you email them to Madam Chair? Or maybe you could do that. Um, anyway, in the spirit of keeping things moving ahead, as Mr. Reynolds says, um, I will turn it over to the board for comments, maybe, I'll start with Mr. Gallagher.
Yes, thank you, Michael. Um, wondering if the hand railings that are actually down into the granite will be secured in some way, because it looks like they're free-floating?
You're talking about like, the, the posts I put?
To the, to the front door, the black hand railings?
Yeah.
That are on the granite stairways?
They are very secure.
When was, when was that done?
I saw when I was doing the project, and then I put that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I only ask, because I was there yesterday, and I could move that railing six inches in both directions, and there was only two bolts in it, and they were loose.
Oh, you're talking about the loose one?
Yes, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, yeah, you're talking about a loose one, but the other one wasn't loose. Okay, so the loose one, like, the reason it's loose is because of, we screwed the holes, it was just like bigger than the screw. You just remove the, the, the old screw and put back the...
Okay, and, and we're okay, whatever happened, happened. We're just saying, there's a bunch of bullet things that I think we're gonna expect you to complete.
Yeah, that one is, um, because...
So, let's, we'll, we'll keep moving, and then we'll come back and...
I can see put, I can see put one, I must have put two. I can remove the other one, and I leave the other one, it's, it's still gonna pass. So, I just put two, because I wanna make it look nice. I can take off one and just leave it like that, just because the bowl is bigger than the hole. And it's easy to fix, we have the, the cement glue, which I have in the house, just to pour the cement glue back. It's just because I've been really busy with this project, like, the short time of now, it's been really, really like, really tough for, for that project. Yeah, but I, that one is, it's an easy fix.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, my, my question was, sir, is there a plan to secure it?
Correct, there is.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Mr. Gallagher?
Um, I'm, I'm going by the photograph here, and it looks like there's a footing for a stairway that hasn't been removed. Is that on the side of the building? Right side of the building?
So, in the driveway, it looks like at some point, there was a, a small deck? And it looks like when you remove the deck and put the stairs in, you never took this down to ground level, or that one?
My question is, is there a plan to remove that?
Okay, so let me just paint a picture for you, because I took these pictures. It's January, it's cold, we have four inches of snow. I'm walking up the driveway, what do you think I'm gonna trip over?
Probably that.
Yeah. You know what, I think it's kind of back to, all work shall be completed in good and workmanlike fashion and properly permitted. I mean, you know, we, we extended our, you know, faith and goodwill through the special permit process, that, you know, all these things we're kind of talking about now?
Yeah.
We're gonna get done, and, and I'll be honest with you, when I went to look at the property, I was pretty disappointed at the exterior. You know, that no landscaping's been done, that the fence has been put in very haphazardly. Nothing's been done to the backyard, it looks basically like the day you bought it. And our expectation was different, you know?
I mean, if, if I come to Zonion, you, you tell me that, and I just feel like, I don't, I don't get any appreciation from, from what I've done on the house. That never moved, that was trash, everywhere was dust, I came out...
Well, you did a good job on the building, but again, we're not asking, we're, we're only here to review what we all agreed upon, that's it.
Yeah, I, I, I get the thought that what I put in the house, listen, it's like, you see some, some yard, nice, but in series, it's trash. What I put in the house, if, if I could bring, have all the money, I have my phone, assuming that you are putting the house, you ask the inspector of the...
Well, no, we, we got to go on the building when, before you did the project.
Yeah, it's, what I put in the house is, is my house was built in two thousand, uh, twenty-two, what I put in the house is even a house that was where I live. What I put in the house is, that first in the house, I didn't speak up to someone, like, they love it. What I put in the house is too much, like, I feel like, what I did is more important, like, the residence shaking, this one's moving, this one's like, they don't pay their house, this is nothing that will be over, I can take that in no time. You know, I find a better house, it means it's been, like, it's not perfect, you have to... This is not free.
Again, we're only here to review what you and the board agreed upon, nothing else. That's all, but let's get through it.
Yeah.
Mr. Reynolds?
Okay.
Mr. Byrne?
You don't want me to start, no, I have no questions.
Okay. Um, Mr. Talbot?
No questions.
Okay. Um, Madam Chair?
Is the property up for sale?
Yes, it is.
Do you had, had you accepted a buyer? Um, do you have a purchase and sales and a closing date?
Yes.
What's your currently scheduled closing date?
Should be tomorrow.
Okay. Do you have any plan to remediate any of the issues, um, that were brought up with the conditions?
Yeah, I do. Because like I said, those things are minor things, like, I even talked to the buyer, like, he knows I could come back and do those things, it's not, everyone, it's shaking, he saw that, it's like, it's a minor thing for us to fix back, and he agreed on that, yeah.
Okay. What would you, what would be your timeline to, um, address these issues?
To fix that, um, the, the thing shaking?
No, we're talking all of the conditions that are on here, I believe. Is that correct, Madam Chair?
Yes.
So, when it comes with the yard at the back, that one, I'm just gonna be honest, I told you guys from the first day, even when you guys given that condition, that one, I could not do that yard work, because it doesn't add up. It does not just add up. I cannot spend almost four hundred thousand dollars on the project, and I'm here, why buy yard work? I can, I cannot do that. That one, I could put my lawyer in front of my line, I cannot do that one. When it comes with the other yard, little things, I don't see any point for that. But when it comes to put the railing thing shaking, I can, that one is, is, is an easy fix. But when you ask me for yard work at the back, I mean, I just cannot do that. I'm just being...
You can, or you don't want to?
It's not, it's not, I don't want to, I don't have the money to, to even do that. I cannot be wasting money on a project that, just insulation on a project, it cost me almost thirty thousand dollars for insulation. Like, I cannot do that, I can't be putting money on things that, it's not gonna add value on the house. I cannot do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
And I also have a question, like, when I came over here, you guys gave me a condition, and you, you asked me to give five thousand dollars. Have you guys ever asked anybody for this, to give five thousand dollars, when the person bought like a, for a special permit? Because like, the question is, why, why did you guys do that to me? Because when I spoke to my lawyer...
I think it's to, when we get to a place like this?
Yeah.
It allows us to deal with...
But nobody, in the history, nobody ever, you never done that to anybody. Because I spoke to my lawyer on that, and he, he emphasized, why was that? Why do, why did you guys ask me for five thousand dollars for a special permit? You want me to fix things, and you, you taking money away from me? And you keep my money in the bank? That's not fair. I just wanna return my five thousand back, that's all I need. Because I cannot be spending on a project, and you guys ask me to keep five thousand dollars. I'm an investor, I work with banks, so if you holding my five thousand, thinking I'm not gonna do a project? No, I just renewed my loan two times, I spent thirty-five thousand dollars on that, on that loan. I'm not a billionaire, I'm still struggling. And to the point where my daughter even, I had to be with my daughter at home for a week, because I could not pay for her daycare. I spent three thousand dollars on daycare a month. But because I could not pay them for that month, I had to keep at home. Like, I'm not qualified for, for RAF or, or for financial aid, because I make money. But if I could pay three thousand dollars on my daughter, and you guys keep asking for everything, everything on the project, like, sometimes, you have, Zonion body need to rethink or consider people, like...
First of all, I apologize, but what you gotta understand is, we're only here because the board and you, the applicant, agreed on a bunch of conditions before even were issued a permit, a building permit.
Yeah.
Okay?
I did everything.
So now, here we are, and we're just trying to go through everything that you agreed to do.
I did everything.
Okay? So, we're gonna get through this.
Yeah.
Good thing.
Madam Chair?
No.
I'm sorry, did you raise your hand?
No, I was, um, I, I think I was the last one talking. And I was just gonna let you know, that was all the questions I had.
Okay. So, before I ask for a motion to approve the review, any other feedback, comments, recommendations?
From me?
From anybody. I mean, my, my personal recommendation would be that we've asked that all of this be done, for clarification. I don't think it's the board's purview, um, or the applicant's word, I think, should we have a inspection done by the Building Department? And they can provide feedback that says, this has been completed?
I, I think that would be an appropriate way to, um, get a report on the condition satisfied, satisfaction.
You know, because...
I, I'm certainly, um, you know, we have a number of conditions that aren't satisfied, and, um, we can discuss whether some of them, um, should be waived, or whether they should be continued. But I think there's a number of important things, um, in that decision that have not been satisfied. I'm certainly not ready to approve the review today.
So, can I say something, ma'am?
Sure.
No, no, the Chair has control of the discussion. Mr. McLaughlin states who may speak at any one time.
Yeah, so I would like you to finish.
Thank you. At the same time, it, you know, I have a lot of sympathy for the fact that this applicant was caught in the middle of the, yeah, the implementation of the new, of the new insulation code by the state, and that increased his costs substantially. At the same time, every person on this board looked at the project, at the beginning of the project, and thought the costs would far exceed the budget that was allocated. Um, and there was a lot of concern about exactly what has happened, which is that the project is not complete. And, um, I don't know that this applicant is going to complete it, because I very much believe him when he says that his costs have exceeded, um, the value that he's gonna get out of this project, or if he puts any more money in it. But at the same time, I don't think the current state of the project is acceptable for approval. I think that's all I have to say, sorry, it's getting late.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm ready to, to close and make a vote, and, um, this is gonna include Mr. Reynolds versus Mr. Talbot, only because I think this predates Mr. Talbot coming on as a board member. My only recommendation as a condition would be, um, some type of language that the, we... Either we put this out for a month, or that it can be approved based on a satisfactory letter from the Building Commissioner that all conditions have been met. Or if the board would like to have some thoughts, otherwise, please bring them up.
Mr. McLaughlin, I'd just say that the suggestion, um, regarding the letter of the Building Commissioner is a good one.
First good thing I've done all night.
Mr. Talbot, your feedback?
I have none. I haven't been really part of this conversation since, uh,
Okay.
Been on the board, so I don't wanna...
Okay, feedback's always appreciated, though. Joe?
I combined you guys tonight.
I, yeah. Mr. Byrne?
I, I can't, um, yeah, I, I feel sorry for the petitioner, but I have to say that you said the right thing in the middle. He agreed to all this stuff, he said he was gonna do it. And from the pictures that I see that were taken today, it's not done. The walls aren't completed, the chain link fence isn't put in, there's pipes stick, sticking up from the ground, there's no green space whatsoever. And it's not like we forced him into committing to this, it's something that he said he was going to do. And now he says he hasn't got the money to do it. I, I, I'm at a quandary of what to do, I don't know. I mean, and now he's got, when is it, when are you closing? When, no, I can't, I can't talk to him.
For that wall, that wall can not, that wall cannot be done, that was fine. The wall is not, the wall is not my wall, so I cannot afford to touch something that doesn't belong to me. So, that one, there's certain things you guys have to waive it, that side could never be done. And talking about putting grass or green yard at the back, when it rains, or when it pours, a lot of water comes for, to that building, because the building, the land, the land is not, it's not level, it's slanted. So, if I go do yard work and it rains, it gonna wash that off, off, it gonna take everything off. So, you, you need to go and see when it rains over there. When it rains, like, go look at the water, it comes on, so doing yard work over there, I mean, it does not add up. It, 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 it just doesn't.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes, thank you, Michael. I can appreciate all the hard work that's been done to the building, and I'd like to congratulate you on it, you, you've done a lot of work to it. But whenever a project like this happens, the devil is always in the detail. And I think it's prudent for us to have the Building Commissioner inspect the things, and have him certify that, that, that conditions which are now requirements be completed. So, that's all I have to say.
Okay. Um, if that's how the board feels, I have a, then we can move ahead with that. Mr. Reynolds, please, would the board consider waiving any conditions? I think you should, you should just review that, prior to taking that next step. Yeah. Yeah. You know, I, I, if you take a look at the picture, the rear wall, it's pretty apparent, right? Uh, major undertaking, uh, it's been there for a hundred, hundred and fifty years, right? Nothing's gonna happen. And, but what would be nice is, get that fence out of there, pile of rocks, get it cleaned up. I'm okay with, you know, we made some accommodations early on. The applicant, we asked him to re-side the whole building, he did not. He feathered in some vinyl, I'm gonna get there. Well, I'm gonna be you for a minute. Just give me the number, it's a yes or no.
Well, I'm gonna be you for a minute, just give me the number, it's a yes or no.
We made some concessions early on, okay? I look at it and say, the landscaping, the fence and the backyard, yes.
Yes, waive?
Need to be done.
Okay.
They were important parts of our conversation.
But just to get to the point, is there anything you would consider waiving?
If you're asking me, as a board member, the rear granite wall?
Okay, what, just to help me, what number is that?
7A.
7A.
7A, Jim.
7A, okay, and then on, on, on 7B and 7C, those were items considered open. Is there any other consideration for 7B or C?
You're asking me or the board?
Yes, yes.
Should be completed, is personally.
So my, my point is, is, is there anything you would take off the list before asking the building commissioner to go?
7A. Any other board members?
For me, I think I'd take all of seven off of it. I'd consider that.
Okay.
If you wanna keep it all, keep it all, but you should, should just affirm prior to taking that next step.
All right, no other feedback from the board? And move to a motion to have the building commissioner provide a letter that conditions have been met? And a review next month, I guess that's all we could ask for, right?
So moved.
Um, in, in, in the meantime, just speaking to the petitioner, you might wanna consider getting those things done so you can move ahead.
What things, like, um, the landscape?
The list, so I would get this copy and look at how important it is to move ahead with these, um, so that you can move ahead with the sale of the, the property.
Yeah, but, um, like I said, my loan expires on the 18th of this month.
I can only tell you where we're at right now?
Yeah, and where you guys are at, because what, what would be the point if I lose the home and the bank come get it back? Everything goes back to, to square one, so what's the gain? There's no gain for that, but the point here is, I have, I have an architect that went to the home, I had to do the whole construction from the house, from the roof, from the, from the attic. I have to reframe the whole house that wasn't even on that project and the city...
We're not gonna disagree with you.
Asked me to do that.
But...
But, and you wanna concern about green, green grass when there's no space for green grass, there are many houses that don't even have green grass.
I get it, what you gotta understand is, you, it sounds like your back's up against the wall.
No, my, my back is all in the wall, it's just because you, you've not been in my shoe, it's just because you don't know how much I put in that project and for you to sit and hold me back for yard work at the back of the house.
We're not trying to hold you back, we're just here to review what you agreed to do.
Because some, some things, some things could be waived, every law has an exception, that's, 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 every law in the whole world has an exception, so if, you have to go back and, like, those, those laws you write were written by humans and humans also fix that, you have to go back and look at the condition like, hey, this is an old house, an existing house. Yeah, but I went through, I, there's nothing I can do, you don't expect me to go get landscaping with the big, uh, truck, go back on the house, start digging the whole yard and put it, and, and fill it with...
We're not asking you to do it now, we had asked you to do it a year ago.
But a year ago, I have to focus to fix the interior of the house, that's what's important to me. And you're saying I did not put aside, I put new siding on the house, I did a siding on the house, I can show you my receipt from Home Depot, I bought siding from Home Depot, I put in the house, I paid everything. The thing you should be concerned about this house is new windows, new roofing, I keep the environment clean, I'm paying taxes to the state, I paid taxes to...
I can argue with you.
I go, I'm paying taxes to your city, I'm, I've developed the, the neighborhood, I make it look clean, I make it look decent, people are, houses are expensive, but we have where to live. I make it cohabitant for you, my, me to go in there and enjoy, you should go in and walk into the house and see the house, you see what I did in the house, go look at it, go, go see the, just go look at the interior for the house.
I did.
Right now, has browned you when I finished your home?
No, yesterday.
No, you, 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 you had a coat, you went inside the house?
No, I looked through the windows.
You should have gone in there and see, look at the house, I did everything in the house, like...
I don't, I...
So, and then, why you gonna hold me for things that could be waived? For yard work? And you guys, you have my $5,000, like, my $5,000, like, okay, I need my $5,000 back, because you guys never did...
I don't think the $5,000 is, is impacted by this.
It is, it's part of the condition.
Is that correct? Hold on one second, I just get it. Madam Tree, if I'm looking at the condition with regards to the, um, deposit?
Yep.
That's if we needed to hire some type of consultant, right?
So the, the deposit has two conditions, number one, if we needed to hire the consultant and that was particularly thinking about the, um, very dilapidated structural condition of the interior of the property, um, so that if we needed a second opinion on the structural integrity of the property, that the funds would be there to do that. Um, and the second condition is, um, that it's, it's a condition of satisfaction of the conditions. So again, um, at the beginning, there were many concerns about whether this project would be completed, um, due to funding. And, uh, this was one of the, um, methods of ensuring that the project was completed.
Okay, so the $5,000 is tied to the conditions?
It is. Um, but could not be used, um, by the city for anything, uh, but that consultant if needed.
Okay, so as we sit now, is he entitled to receive those funds back?
We would need to find that this project has been satisfactory, completed in accordance with the special permit. And if we didn't find that within the 18 months, um, then under the special permit, the, um, fund forfeited to the cities.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I wanna try to move to a vote, again with the condition as I stated, um, does the board have any appetite to waive 7A?
I do.
I do.
I do as well, if the board, if the wall doesn't belong, actually belong to him, then I certainly do.
Okay. Mr. Byrne's okay with that, okay, so I'm gonna ask for a motion, um, and that would be to strike 7A and, um, it would be a review for next, for June 11th. And in the meantime, we're requesting that the building commissioner, um, respond with a letter that all conditions have been satisfactorily completed.
So moved.
Can I have a second, second? Okay, um, roll call, all those in favor, Mr. Byrne?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds, all right, Mr. Gallagher?
Aye.
Madam Chair?
Aye.
And myself as well, okay. So what we came up is, is we'll see you on June 11th. Building Commissioner's gonna make a site review and he's gonna come back to us and say, these have been met or they haven't. Okay? Any questions?
I just wanna know if I get my $5,000 back, that's important to me.
It sounds, oh, and we strike 7A so you don't have to do the wall, all the other conditions remain?
What conditions, like, the one for, to do the yard work at the back?
I would read through them and make sure they are all met, except for 7A.
Yeah, I get it, but before I leave, yeah, this one, too, I'm just putting on the table, I'm not doing the yard work and I can willing to do whatever you guys want me to.
That's your prerogative, that's your choice.
Yeah, I just need my $5,000 back and so we should not take the other way around.
That's your choice.
Yeah, because I could willing to get a lawyer involved for this, I can, I need my, I, that's, 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 that's the truth, because you don't expect me to go did a, dig a yard work when it's, it just kinda work, when it rains, you're gonna wash that off, it's impossible.
You apologize?
I cannot do that.
I don't wanna continue to, you know, debate with you.
Okay.
Um, but we appreciate your time. Okay, any other business tonight?
Thank you, Christine.
Thank you for all of those that are participated remote.
Thank you for those who participated in person.
We hope, um, all family is...
Here, here.
And travel safe.
Hope everything's okay in your end, too, hope mom's much better.
Uh, it's not been a great week, um, but today was much better news, so thank you.
Can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second. Goodnight, Zonies.